Welcome, everyone, to North Ogden City Council. We appreciate your attendance here this evening. We'll begin our meeting with an invocation and pledgable allegiance by Cheryl Stoker, councilwoman, or council member.
Father in heaven, we're grateful for this opportunity we have together tonight and to discuss items that are of importance to the city and for our residents who come and put their input into these discussions also. We pray for civility and open minds as we discuss these things, and we are always grateful for the opportunity we have to serve and that we do our best that we can with what we know. We're thankful for this area that we live in and for the freedoms that we have and our men and women and who are out serving and their families that sacrifice while they are away from home. We thank thee for all that thou has given us in this name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand and repeat after me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please mute your cellphones so that it won't be disturbing the meeting, and we'll proceed with the consent agenda. Item two, discussion and/or action to consider March 20th, city council meeting minutes.
Mayor, I'd move that we approve the consent agenda, approving council meeting minutes from March 20th and April 3rd.
Motion has been made to approve the minutes from March 20th and April 3rd. Have a second?
Second.
We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, we have time for public comments. This for the benefit of time in this evening. For those of you who want to have discussions during our public hearing regarding the city budget, if you wait till we get to that item, it might be helpful to you. So we'll open it up now for public comment. Please state your name and your address as you approach the podium.
I'm Brian Bartholomew, 3712 Nebo Avenue, and I appreciate your comment about the budget, but I need to talk now because I have a meeting to be to in just a little bit. So I spent about an hour this morning going through the city budget that I've got a pull-up here on my phone, and there's a number of things that draw big red flags to me, starting at number one with the amphitheater. $700,000 for the amphitheater, that is not necessary, in my opinion. I've been involved with the, you know, following the lawsuit. I was there with a judgment. It was interesting to me what the judge, in my opinion, cherry-picked for testimony to come to his conclusion. I feel like he overlooked the overall intent of what Hendricks talked about in his testimony. So I think that the amphitheater needs to be put on hold before you spend another $800, $700,000. Now, you've also got $21,000 in the budget for the play. Again, that stuff that I think should be put off. I don't think the city should be involved in the entertainment industry. I think you're competing with the private sector. I think that should be put off. Other red flags that I came across on this budget is looking at some of the salaries versus employee benefits. I don't know what is included in the term "benefits," but on some of these, the benefits is almost 100% the salaries. I'm looking at one particular department, the salaries is 1.3 and the benefits is 8.29. It's $1.3829,000. You know, that seems a bit skewed. Now, I may be off. Other departments are 50%, 60% the wages are benefits. So what are the benefits and, you know, who decides those? And, you know, to me, there's just lots of extra money being kind of thrown around here, and I feel like the city council, the city itself, is having a good time with other people's money, and there's no reason 10%, 20% couldn't be taken off the top and make these departments, you know, sharpen their pencil and save some money. Give the money back to the citizens of the money, you know, where it's coming from. I've heard rumors that the recycle fee is going up. We have money to spend on the amphitheater, but we're paying more for recycling. I have not confirmed that. That was something I wanted to put in an email to you, Mayor. So again, there's more than enough money here that can be returned to the citizens that don't need to be spent on pet projects. The pond, you know, is being rumored, the community pond, whatever. Again, that's another, it's another pool, it's another amphitheater. It's just dead weight that we, the citizens, are just going to have to pay to maintain, and there's no need for it. That's not what the city should be dealing with. They should be dealing with the needs of the city, which are, you know, police, roads, sewer, water, not entertainment. That's my opinion. Again, I'd love to sit down with each one of you individually and discuss it. My interest in the amphitheater from the beginning has been financial, and it continues. So anyway, I will shoot emails to you guys, but like I said, I'd love to sit down with each one of you and discuss it privately. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
My name is Jim Shoup. I live over on 276 East Alberta Drive and have lived there for a lot of years. I want to just give you thanks for your service, and I'll be quick in what I want to say. But my grandpa was on the city council probably in the 40s and 50s for, I think, three terms, and then my dad was too for three terms during the period of Bill Chandler and, uh, Bill, 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 Bill. The names, that's slipping me right now. That's what happens when you get older. I came to you because my wife and I are building a new house up on 3045 North and 750 East, and it's a flag lot. And I know we were one of the last people to probably be approved for a flag lot, and that was back in 2007. Some of you might remember that. And we are asking for a variance on the ordinance that says that we need to have a paved driveway all the length of that flag lot. And that's an acre and a half piece of property we're on, actually an acre and a half, and my daughter's and her husband has a house there. But we're sitting 297 feet back from the road. And we have owned that property for many, many years. The road that I'm talking about, the flag lot, is 16 years old, and during that time, I want to just mention a few of the things that we've had down it. And first of all, I want to thank maybe two, Cheryl for coming over and walking it, and Blake for coming over and walking it, and Rob for walking it. And I know Bruce and Gary Kerr are very familiar with it. But as I mentioned, I didn't mention it, but this flag lot is 297 feet from our garage drive out to 750 East. But during that 16 years, we've had that rolled by a heavy duty roller at least two times that I can remember, maybe more. It's been gravelled all that time. In that time, we've had three great big track holes come down it, and they've cracked all the sidewalk out there next to 750, and when we finish, we're going to replace that. But on that down there, we are going to, when we do our cement work, come up 81 feet, so it's even with the east end of our shop. There's an orchard, a shop, and then our house. And that leaves about 218 feet, but that road has had the rollers on it, the track hose. It's had a few semis down there way back when we were getting it approved. The city had the big fire truck come down there to make sure the hammerhead worked down there, and there was plenty of room and also plenty of water for that. We've had at least 30, 80-ton cement trucks go down there. Over those years, we've had 10-wheel gravel trucks and trucks hauling in topsoil and a few semis that used to bring us boxes when we had an orchard down there. And so that road is as hard as a rock. If you came up and walked it and I gave you a pick, you would have trouble picking that into it. I think asphalt would be a little softer. It's not as hard as cement. And so we're asking for a variance, but before you make a decision on that, I want to just mention, and this sounds like I'm on a tangent, but we've raised five kids in our home with the same standards, the same everything, and they're all different. Every one of them's different. And you read a lot of times, you know, this glove fits, it's, uh, fits all sizes. Well, flag lots are not all the same. They're different, too, kind of like our five kids are. And so I think I need to ask you, each one of you council members that haven't been up there, to just come up there either on your own, or my wife and I are always free. We'd be loved to, we'd love to meet you anytime and have you walk it and look at it and see what I'm trying to get across that I know I'm not doing a very good job of right now. And so that's our request, that you take the time to maybe listen to Cheryl, Rob, Blake, come up and look for yourself. And it would cost, well, we're going to have over $10,000 in cement, and I've spent so many $10,000 on that blasted house this whole last year that another $10,000 to go on out, I'm about to my last $10,000. And if there's any way that I can have a variance, and I think when you walk it and you look at it, you might agree with me. You might not. I hope you do. Any questions? Other than sit down and be quiet? Thanks.
Okay, if there's no other comments, then we'll proceed with item five on the agenda. Discussion or action to consider requests by visionary homes for cottages at the Village of Prominence Point. Representative will be Rob Scott, our planning director.
Thank you, Your Honor, and members of the council and the audience. And the audience may or may not be aware of the Village of Prominence Point project. There's five different component parts or phases to that project. One of those is to put together age-restricted cottages for that, one of those housing types that are in that particular project. And as such, you'll remember that the development agreement specifies that as part of the site plan review, the mayor and planning director will take a look at the overall site plan and take, as we started the review process, we noticed that the applicant has put in, instead of hardy board, which is the required siding, they desire to have some stucco on the sides and rear of those particular units. So as such, we've identified, and they are here this evening so they can make their statement or their proposal to you in detail. Again, the development agreement specifies specific materials. The main concern that was discussed in coming to a determination on what materials would be appropriate was quality and durability. We had lots of discussions about that with the city council and the planning commission, and it was determined at that time that, as you see on page two, those materials that are allowed shall be cementous siding, hardboard, and stone veneer with the exception of the windows and doors. So this is a policy decision. If you decided that you wanted to allow for stucco, then John can give you some counsel on how to go about that, but it probably requires an amendment to the development agreement. And one thing we would suggest is if you're going to do it for that, you probably should do it for the rest of the project as well. Any questions?
Just to, is it actual stucco or is it a EFAS material, or do you know?
I'll have to ask them, but the terminology that was shown on the plan is stucco. Okay? All right? Any others? Thank you.
Who's going to be the spokesperson here? I'm happy to go.
I will be brief. A fairly simple request that we're making, and I'll focus my brief comments on the reason why we are asking to, asking the city to consider, to consider stucco as an option. Since that agreement was signed, our building costs have gone up around 20%. Anyone who's involved in the construction industry can vouch for that statement. We are trying to bring this product in at a price point that is competitive. That's the challenge for all builders. You know, I recognize that we are not unique in that situation, and I agree with, with Mr. Call that it would require an amendment. As I see it, I think it would require an amendment to the development agreement, which is easy enough to do. But that is why. We feel that stucco is a good, a good compromise in that it is still, we see it as a very durable and high-quality product. We are not asking for vinyl. And the stucco that we're asking for, you know, the year is 2018, not 1989. When we were still figuring out how to put stucco on Utah homes, we figured that out at this point. And so as far as a quality and durability perspective goes, we feel very comfortable with stucco and the advances that they've made in stucco. So that is our request, is that we be able to put stucco not on the, on the front, but on the sides and on the back of these units. And as, as Rob mentioned, while the specific request was for cottages, we would ask that it also be considered for the townhomes that we're doing, again, on the sides and on the rear elevations. We, we don't feel that that changes the character or the level of quality. And one thing for the city council to keep in mind and maybe to take some comfort in is that these cottages are, I mean, we have a very exacting market that we are trying to reach out to, the 55 and over market. We can't sell junk to these folks. They won't buy it. These cottages are coming in between 1,500 and 1,800 square feet, if I remember right, and they will be selling. We're hoping to get them to where we can sell them for around $330,000 to $350,000. So we're not trying to push what some would call an affordable product on the city after the fact, not at all. We're trying to come in at a price point that we originally thought we could. So that's what we're asking for, is that we be able to put stucco on the side and rear Any questions for me?
Could you answer my question? Is it stucco or actually EFAS?
Once you asked that question, I texted Jeff Jackson, who's the owner, and I haven't gotten a response yet, but let me ping him again, and once he answers, I'll be happy to circle back and answer that question for you.
You know, there's a big difference.
Yes, sir. Although I can't say that, you know, I usually handle the legal end of things for the company, and I, I won't hold myself out as a construction expert. But it's a valid question, yes.
Carl, what's the difference?
Stucco is actually a cementous product. It's basically, it's the chicken wire, they put a scratch coat on, finish it.
What's the other called?
EFAS. It's an acronym for Exterior Installation Finishing System. It gets the insulation on, and then they put a brown coat on it and then a color coat. It has a lot of latex on it.
Right.
There is some cementous material in it, but not as much.
Okay.
And stucco, you have to have control joints in. EFAS, you don't have to have as much control joint. EFAS is, is, it's not as good a quality as a stucco. Stucco is, but stucco cracks and freezes, and you can have some issues there if you don't put control joints.
Okay. So hopefully, within the next few minutes, I can reach Jeff. Once I get that answer, I can let Rob know, let the council know in some way, even if it's just raising my hand and saying it's stucco. Any other questions? Thank you.
Any discussion from the council?
Yeah, I have one question, Brandon. I know that the Village of Prominence Point was not under the Form Base Code, but how would that differ?
There are materials specified in the Form Base Code. I don't recall at the moment if it's specifically to side and front, but, and I don't know if stucco is allowed at the moment. I just hadn't looked at it recently.
With the Form Base Code?
Yeah. It's, I think it specifies like a certain percentage on the front facade of brick and or other materials, brick, glass, and can't remember the rest.
Thank you, Senator.
Well, when I saw this on the agenda and I read through the documents that we have, I was disappointed to see that we are once again back at discussing what can and can't be done at Village of Prominence Point. We've been three and a half years now working through this to get to the density that they wanted and quality that we wanted to ensure a good product. And now that they have the density that they wanted, in exchange for the hardy board and not having stucco and those things, now we're wanting to go back to stucco. So my question at this point is what density are they willing to sacrifice in order to go to the cheaper product in stucco? Because we specifically, as a council, negotiated with, on this, on this development agreement, specific building materials to make this as nice a product as can possibly be, reasonably be, in exchange for higher density levels than we initially wanted. And I think if we're going to go back to less quality, not inferior quality as far as will it work, won't it work, but less quality than what was negotiated in the agreement to get the density they want, then I want to know what, for me, what density is going to be sacrificed and to bring it back closer to the density that we had originally wanted as a council. That's where I am. I'm very frustrated that this is even being asked for.
Any other concerns or direction from the council? Then we refer back to the planning commission.
May I approach the, real quick? To answer Councilman Turner's question, yes, we would commit to using stucco, not In fact, that's our preference. EFAS sometimes has some, well, there's been some lawsuits regarding EFAS, as I'm sure you're aware, so we try to avoid it.
Were you outside while Councilman Swanson?
I was. I apologize. I was on the phone with Mr. Jackson.
Councilman Swanson wanted to ask for consideration on your behalf.
The comment that I had was that, you know, we've been through three and a half years of negotiation to get to this development agreement. The developer wanted more density than the city initially wanted. We came up on the density. You guys came up on the quality of product, the type of product that would be used.
Sure.
I'm very frustrated that this question's even being asked, given it took three and a half years to get to where we were. And we're often very close to just saying, you know, enjoy the land ownership, but we're not going to give you the kind of density that you would like. So my question at this point is, what density are you going to sacrifice in order to go back down the, down the totem pole, if you will, in material? It's going to change the exterior look. It may be from a durability standpoint. I'm not a construction guy, so I can't tell you if hardy board's going to last longer than true stucco or not. Carl, you could help me understand that, or if there are less issues or whatever. But it's certainly going to change the design characteristic of the entire place. Instead of having hardy board on the side, it's now going to be just plain old stucco. It's going to look like the Arizona jungle that I came from, where everybody has stucco and every house has stucco, and everything is stucco and tile roof, and it gets rather monotonous. And part of the density that we gave, that we negotiated as a council, was to get away from that, to have a different kind of project here in North Ogden. So for me, I'm happy to go with stucco if you're willing to give up density, and I think we need to go back to the negotiating board and say, okay, you, you know, we have to talk about what's going to be there now that you want to come down the totem pole in quality and the type of building that was agreed upon that we would have there. That's where I am.
Okay. Would you like me to respond to that?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'm sure we are as frustrated as you that it took three and a half years, sir. My second point is that we're also frustrated that our costs have gone up 20% since we signed the agreement. We're just trying to build high-quality homes that people can afford.
Right.
University of Utah came out with, from the Kim Gardner Center, came out with a study on the challenge of providing homes that people can actually buy. We're also doing this in the context of higher interest rates. Interest rates are also going up. So you need to understand, Mr. Swanson, this is not a bait and switch on our part. This is a change in circumstances that we're trying to deal with, and we feel that the proposal that we have made is a reasonable one. You're welcome to disagree.
I understand. I don't see it as a bait and switch so much as it is, we spent three and a half years assuring the residents of North Ogden what kind of project was going to be there, that we wouldn't allow just whatever to show up there and be this high-density place, you know.
Well, in all fairness, I don't think that we're proposing just whatever.
No, I agree, but it's still going to end up being a stucco jungle, in my vision. Three sides of every building will be stucco. You'll have a nice-looking front. The sides in the rear will no longer be what we had anticipated, what the citizens relied on us to negotiate on their behalf. It'll no longer be that.
It, we are proposing something different. You know, I'm not going to back away from that.
I understand. I'm just explaining to you.
As far as whether we're proposing a jungle to 55 and over people and hoping that they just buy it, I mean, you need to understand, we've done our research as well, and we feel that the character of the neighborhood, in other words, putting stucco on the side and rear elevations, we don't think that's going to be a game changer for most buyers. At least that's what we're willing to place our bet on.
I'm not worried about the buyers. I'm worried about the residents that we made commitments to. This is coming in because we're not going to do this and we are going to do that.
Sure. Well, and if, if the citizens are as vehemently anti-stucco as what you're suggesting, then you should probably not approve it, but I'm not sure that's the case.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
The thing that frustrates me, too, is the fact that every time we get something done with you for three and a half years, you come back with, you want something more, something different.
If I can make some, if I can clarify something, we are not the developer. We are not the people that you've been dealing with for three and a half years. You've been dealing with us for maybe eight months. We are a builder who's come in and we have purchased a portion of the property from the developer with whom you took a very long and difficult journey for three and a half years. So we're relatively new to the scene, and I understand your frustration.
So it's not our fault that it's taken three and a half years, and it's not our fault that costs went up. It's the, whoever put this project together, that they haven't moved on it or gone fast.
Sure. And while I'm not willing to accept blame for three and a half years because we are new on the scene, and I'm not, I'm not insisting that you do. I'm not saying that you should take the blame here.
Well, the city should take.
No, I'm not saying that you should. I'm saying that is what it is, and the price increases, those are what they are. We're just trying to find our way forward. This is not a guilt trip, and I hope that it's not coming across as one. I recognize your frustration in the development process. It is a long process. We recognize that. We've bought a portion of the, of the development from the developer. We want to put high-quality townhomes and 55 and over cottages there. Our prices have gone up around 20%. We're looking for ways to still bring the product in at a decent price point. It's really that simple. This is not us trying to take a jab at the city or expect you to just do whatever we want you to do. I hope you understand that.
Well, I've read the same Well, I've read the same article, too, by the Kim Gardner, being involved in real estate myself.
Sure.
I think it's going to be something that we're going to have to reconsider, definitely. So.
Sure.
But we appreciate you being willing to come and chat.
No problem. And, look, we thought we would ask. I hope that we don't come across as, again, trying to pull some kind of a bait and switch on the city. We're not about that. We're trying to respond to different circumstances than when we signed the development agreement. I can't imagine, this is the first time, that someone has come back to ask for an amendment to the development agreement. I think that happens. And again, we can't control our costs. We can't control the demand, which is very real, and we aren't even close to keeping up with the demand. As much development and construction as is going on, not even close to real demand. We need a two-year lot inventory before we are keeping up with demand, and we're not even close, along the Wasatch Front, not even close.
Go ahead. My quick question, what's the cost difference per residence for Stucco versus hardy board? How much more is it going to be about?
That's a really good question, and I don't have the answer to that off the top of my head. I can try to do some quick texting. I honestly don't know. Again, I'm not involved in the construction.
Hardy board has gone up enough to where it's almost as much as brick right now. It's gone up that much. You know, you asked Phil on the constructability and the durability. Hardy board's, it's hardy. I mean, it's durable. You'd have to paint it, you know, so there's some maintenance there. I'm not opposed to Stucco either, you know. If you had the money, I'd do brick, you know. And right now, that's about what hardy board is costing, is about as much it is for the stacked brick. So it's pricey. The cost, and he said it's gone up 20%, that's probably a little low on the cost of construction right now, so. By the way, hardy board sucks to put on, I'm just saying.
That's why I'm not putting it on.
Any other questions or discussion?
Sorry, I apologize. I was just going to say, I sincerely apologize to the council, even considering this. We recognize, and to your point, Councilman Swanson, we all strive for certainty. That's why we put agreements in writing. We recognize that. We recognize that process and the decisions and agreements that are made, they mean something. We're simply asking for the city council to consider the circumstances in which we find ourselves now and consider if this adjustment is a reasonable one. That's for the council to decide. So if there are no other questions, I'll go ahead and say that. Thank you.
Is there any questions or action that the council wants forth this evening?
From my opinion, I need to think a little bit more about it. Just mull it over in my head a little more. Again, I'm not opposed to the Stucco. I just need to think if that's what we want there, and so I just need to think a little bit more on it. But I don't know if anybody else has thoughts or comments.
Well, I don't have a personal opposition to Stucco. My house is made out of Stucco. The one I'm in now, the one I had in Arizona, you know. Stucco is certainly a readily-used and durable product in the market. My concern is, we made a commitment to the residents, what this place was going to look like, what it was going to be, in exchange for the density that they were going to have to live next to. And that's my concern, is that we made those commitments as a council. We negotiated for three and a half years, not with you, Visionary Homes. You know, it's only been eight months with you guys, but this has been, you know, when we think, when we thought we had Village at Prominence Point nailed down, then something else came up and we had to go back. And then it came up again, and we thought we had it nailed down, and then it came up again, and we have a whole nother thing to look at. We think we have it nailed down and finalized, and here we are with something else. And again, I know, I appreciate that it hasn't been the three and a half years with you, but for us, you're the seventh person in line, the first six have all punched us, right? Every time somebody else comes up on this project, it's something else that has to change. So I think we're a little bit reflexive on another, and, you know, we did hear from a lot of the individuals who live in the area surrounding this and making commitments to them that we would demand a certain type of product, and they saw and agreed and liked it, and I'm, for me, this is a no-go. I would propose a motion to deny the request by Visionary Homes for the use of Stucco at Village at Prominence Point.
So was that a motion?
That's a motion. A motion that we deny the request. Based on the development agreement that we have and all of the work that went into that and the commitments we made to the residents. I get it from a profitability standpoint, I get it from a penciling standpoint, I get it. But the individuals who live around there, we made commitments, and I think we need to stick to those. That's for me.
With no second, the motion dies. Moving on to the next item, discussion and interaction to consider a special exception for the Marsh subdivision located approximately 173 East, 2000 North.
Mayor, just a point of order, are we done with item five then? Is that going to come back at another meeting? Does it just go off into limbo land now, or what happens? Because it's been neither denied nor approved. So without it being approved, it's essentially denied, so.
It has come back for any reconsider action?
Is there any information the council would like, when we could have this come back, that you'd want additional information on?
My Planning Commission, what are their thoughts on it and stuff? I mean, have they talked about it? Do they?
I don't believe this has been broached in any of their meetings, so.
You know, I'd be interested to hear what their thoughts are, and I don't know if we can move that to the joint work session and discuss it there, if that's feasible. Just trying to get their thoughts on it. Can we do that, since we have that joint session tonight, or is that out of order?
You, I mean, technically, it is on the agenda. You could ask them their opinion about it, although it's not on their agenda for the work session. So probably would be better to have it discussed when it's on their agenda, and then they could make a recommendation to the council, if that's...
Then I would move that we have the Planning Commission review this and then make a recommendation.
Yes, we move the Planning Commission review.
I'll second that.
Have a second. Do you start the vote with Councilman Swanson?
Yes.
Councilman Barker?
Yes.
Councilman Severin?
Yes.
Councilman Turner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stoker?
Yes.
Motion passes. It'll be referred then to the Planning Commission for a recommendation. Next item then will be the discussion and action to consider special exception for the Marsh subdivision located approximately 173 East, 2000 North. Presenter will be Brandon Beller, our associate planner.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. This project, or this special exception is in relation to a subdivision that was recently approved by the Planning Commission with a few conditions. The project acreage is 3.69 acres, and there's three parcels involved. They're, the Planning Commission granted final approval for that subdivision at their May 16th meeting, and, let's see. The reason why this subdivision was brought to, just as a point of background, was brought to the Planning Commission is because there was an earlier subdivision for this property that was recorded without city approval. And this was discovered as part of the applicant seeking a building permit for an accessory building on that property. The approval of the Planning Commission was granted for the subdivision with the condition that the property line is to be adjusted to either the location needed to dedicate the full right-of-way width, as is typically done with all subdivisions, or to another location based on the approval of a special exception. Just to clarify that, the property line currently in this, in front of the property involved with, in this subdivision, is out in the street. There was never a full dedication of property that's in the street right-of-way on this property. And so, in order to correct that, staff, as part of the subdivision that the applicant brought to us within the last year, staff pointed out that that needed to be corrected. And at that time, in that, in working with the applicant, the applicant decided that he wanted to pursue a special exception to request not to have to dedicate the entire right-of-way involved, so that typically, our full right-of-way width is 66 feet, and it's usually, the right-of-way continues till about one foot behind the sidewalk and nine and a half feet behind the back of curb. And so, the applicant has had a long history of ownership of this property and has some site improvements on the property that he would prefer to keep, and that was his basis for requesting the special exception for a narrower right-of-way width. He would still be required to dedicate additional property, but not the full right-of-way width. So what we're, what the, there are two sets of criteria that need to be considered in a special exception request. And the first is called the guidelines in our city code, and then the second is prohibitions. I'm going to read through the guidelines and then give staff commentary on those guidelines. The first guideline is, the item of the health, safety, and general welfare in the best interests of the city should be considered in these sorts of decisions. Staff believes that it is in the best interest of the city to have the property for the same full right-of-way width dedicated to the city, just as with all other subdivisions. There was a recent sidewalk deferral for this property that council could consider, I believe is at the March 6th meeting. And in contrast to that sidewalk deferral, removing the requirement for the dedication of the property altogether by granting a special exception would eliminate the likelihood of a sidewalk being installed at any point in the future, even at the city's expense, because the city would not own the property where the sidewalk would be installed, and the city would need to purchase it from the applicant at a later time. Whereas, in contrast to virtually all subdivisions that we've passed, the applicant dedicates the property and the city doesn't have to pay to acquire it as a separate transaction. And so, if the special exception is denied, it would be consistent with other subdivisions where the property would be dedicated to the city at no cost. The second guideline is the impact on neighboring properties, including the ability to develop neighboring parcels in accordance with the general plan. Staff's comment on that is that not requiring the dedication of the property required for the standard right-of-way reduces the flexibility of the city to use the right-of-way as needed in the future and as it is used in subdivisions throughout the city. Further, not requiring dedication of the property sufficient to meet the full standard right-of-way width of 66 feet may set a precedent for not requiring the full right-of-way for other projects and properties in the future. The third guideline is the unique character of the property, such as physical surroundings, shape, topographical conditions, the use of natural resources, preservation of historical, cultural, or community features. Staff's comment on this is that the subdivision has a power pole and a fence along the front of the property and stamped concrete immediately behind the curb. Almost all neighboring properties also have a sidewalk. There are a couple to the east of this. As you approach, on 2000 North, as you approach Washington Boulevard, there's a few in the industrial areas and the residential properties to the east that don't have a sidewalk. But most of the properties in this area do have a sidewalk. The next guideline is that community design, including connectivity between subdivisions, including utilities, trails, roads, bus routes, parks, open space, and other similar considerations. Again, while the sidewalk deferral has been granted for the subdivision, granting a special exception greatly increases the difficulty of ever installing the sidewalk in the future, should the property be sold to another owner or widening the road in the future. This would put the city in a position where, again, the city would need to purchase the property, where it's typically dedicated at no cost to the city. Another relevant issue is that this area is directly on the way to Orion Junior High, and so staff feels that as many sidewalks as possible should be recommended and enabled to occur, should that time come on this property. And then finally, the city engineers submitted comments, which were in the exhibits attached to this staff report. Those comments can be summarized by stating that the current plaque shows that the right-of-way width is 17.5 feet short of the typical right-of-way, that the city engineer, and that the city engineers have the opinion that automobile traffic will be fine without the full property dedication, given that the street is already in place, but that pedestrian traffic clearly wouldn't be possible on this side of the street without property dedication for the full right-of-way width necessary to accommodate the sidewalk. There are prohibitions, is the second set of criteria that are addressed in our code. Staff's view is that none of the prohibitions that are listed in the staff report in and of themselves prevent this special exception from being approved. And staff's reasons for recommending that this special exception not be approved have already been identified in this report, as I've spelled out to you. I'd also like to note that the Planning Commission, when they considered this, recommended to the city council that the special exception not be granted and that the applicant be required to dedicate the property for the full required right-of-way, as is a standard requirement for all subdivisions. I believe, my understanding is that that recommendation was based on not feeling like it met the criteria for a special exception. We have, Don, I don't know if you're, it seems like our Commissioner Wade is prepared to speak to that issue if the council has questions regarding the Planning Commission's basis for recommending that this special exception not be approved. Obviously, the applicant will have an opportunity to address the council, but he's also remarked to me that he would be okay with the special exception being denied as long as the improvements on the site at the front of the property were left in place. Again, those two main improvements there are the stamped concrete that are right behind the curb and the wrought iron fence that's in place. A final note that I would make is that if the special exception is granted, you'll need to specify a location at which the property line should be, you know, which will be different than where it typically would be, but you'll need to specify that in whatever motion so that the subdivision plaque can be adjusted accordingly. And if we get to that point, I'd be happy to provide a recommendation on where staff believes that that should be, if it goes down the path of being approved by the city council for the special exception request. But again, in summary, the basic request is to not require the full right-of-way width, to have a narrow right-of-way so that the applicant can keep the property at the front of his yard, in which he has a wrought iron fence and stamped concrete, so. I think that concludes my report. Are there questions that you have for me? Okay.
Mayor, Brandon, just one quick one. So the question I wrote down, and I think you answered it, I just want to make sure I'm clear, is that if we deny the special exception and we require the property dedication, the improvements would not have to be removed until such time as we were actually going to install a sidewalk or build the street. Because this is, this is a single-family home. This isn't a subdivision where other homes are going to be built or anything like that. This is a very large, an estate kind of lot.
Yeah.
Where the city would be putting, we'd be putting the sidewalk in.
That's correct. You would have the option to allow those to stay, and I believe that the property owner, if that were to be the case, that you require the property to be dedicated, would like, and the city council is comfortable leaving those site improvements in place. I believe the, I'll let him speak for himself to clarify if I'm missing something, but I believe he'd like some sort of assurance, you know, mechanism for insurance, assurance that those would stay for a certain period of time or for the duration of his ownership or something to that, that you could work out. And I would guess that John would be able to specify the correct legal mechanism for doing that. I'm glad you brought that up, because that's an important point, so.
That was a question I had. Okay, thank you.
Brandon?
Yes.
If and when that time comes, who would be responsible for moving that light pole?
If the city owned the property, my understanding is that the city would incur the costs and the responsibility for doing that. If I'm incorrect, I guess John or Rob can correct me, or, yeah. But the main issue here that I would like to point out is that there's a difference between granting a sidewalk deferral, there's a major difference between granting a sidewalk deferral and not requiring the dedication... deferral and not requiring the dedication of property, because with that, you're, not only is the sidewalk been deferred, but basically the possibility of sidewalk being installed has been eliminated, reasonably speaking, so. Any other questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Marsh?
Mr. Marsh? Dave Marsh, One Seventy-three East, Two Thousand North. I've worked with Brandon and the planning commission on this, and that's my biggest issue. I'm fine dedicating the thirty-three-foot road right-of-way to the city, because I'm pretty sure in my lifetime, nothing's ever going to happen. The city would have to acquire, buy all the property east of me, all the way to Washington Boulevard, and move the power poles. We've already gone through all that cost. Most all of you have been down to my place and seen the fence, the stamped concrete, what we're looking at doing. Technically, I'm buying thirty feet of property from my neighbor to the east of me, and so that's what spurred all this on, and we found out that technically I still own out to almost the center of the road. So, I would like to dedicate to the back of the curb and retain the property, but if it's a big issue, I don't want to draw this out long tonight, just make a decision. I'm fine doing the full thirty-three-foot right-of-way, but I don't want to move the fence, the stamped concrete. Generally, when that happens, the city acquires that cost, and that was talked about in the minutes in Two Thousand One, a bunch of the minutes that we had when we talked about the sidewalk, that the city would reimburse the property owners to relocate those utilities. There's also water meters and secondary boxes that would need to be relocated out of that, you know, within that right-of-way where they should be. Right now, they're just back in there where they really wouldn't be if it was to subdivision standards of today. So, I'm good either way. I would just like to leave my property the way it is. The reason why I would like it to the back of the curb is so that I can control who digs up the front of my property. Comcast come through just recently and kind of raised havoc through a lot of their. They can only come to One Fifty East, because from One Fifty East all the way to Washington Boulevard, there's no city, the city don't own any of that property, so. And that's what we're talking about here, is you guys taking that section of property in front of my house for an existing, or a future sidewalk, which I don't, generally it doesn't go through industrial property, but if they do a special sidewalk or anything like that, that's, it'll happen at that time. So, and I'd be willing to work with the city at that time to, you know, move the fence and stamped concrete and all that, when a actual project is approved and gonna go in. So, any questions? All good? Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions or discussion?
Hear from Chairman Wade.
Okay.
I was just, I was just gonna throw our two cents in. As we considered this, two weeks ago, two weeks, three weeks ago, that was kind of the same conclusions. There was a number of things. I mean, there was a building permit applied for in Two Thousand One. He, as far as the property owner knew, he would, did everything according to city standards, and then when they went back to, to get this building permit, they found out that it hadn't been recorded properly, and we're looking at, it's like, okay, in terms of continuity, and as Brandon said, you know, future in the city, it probably makes sense to dedicate the property back, but our feeling was also that the property owner shouldn't be punished for not understanding the city code when the city didn't understand it at the time, apparently. And so, that was our idea, leave the improvements there, but dedicate the property and leave everything alone as long as we can, until there is a reason. And as, as Mr. Marsh said, the property immediately to the west has sidewalk, everything from Marsh's property all the way to Washington Boulevard, there are no sidewalks on that side of the road. And that was an agreed-on, upon thing, because of the power poles, because of the utilities. When Orion was built, and the road was, the road was widened, but all the sidewalks were put over on the north side because of reduced cost. So, any other questions?
Okay. I have one quick question.
Okay.
If we deny the special exception, how do we, can we just do in our motion to be able to allow him to keep that stamped concrete and wrought iron fence, and that's?
So, we could do, similar to there's the gentleman on Fruitland who had the fence that was in the right-of-way, and we actually let him, because he wanted some certainty as well, we recorded a document with him against the property that said, the fence can stay where it's at until the city widens the road. So, and that was the, you know, and, and I think his impression was the same thing as Mr. Marsh's, which is, the road isn't going to be widened for quite a long time, if ever, so.
Well, with that being said, I'd make a motion that we deny the special exception for the Marsh subdivision, approximately One Seventy-three East, Two Thousand North, but allowing him to maintain and keep his stamped concrete and wrought iron fence in front of the property.
We've had a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Say we start the voting with Councilman Barker?
Yes.
Councilman Sebry?
Yes.
Councilman Turner?
Yes.
Councilman Stoker?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to deny passes, right?
Correct. However, we have those other items that are waiting, along with others here. What is your recommendation?
I think we ought to, I'm, I'm assuming that there's several residents here for the public hearing, and I would, I would, maybe we can defer the other two till after the, the joint work session or something like that. I, I mean, you know, that would be one thought.
Okay. Councilman Swanson?
Mayor, I'd move that we move item seven, the one that I was going to present, to another meeting. We'll just take it off the agenda for tonight. It's not crucial at this moment.
Move that item seven be removed from the agenda. Have a second?
I'll second that.
Second?
Carl Turner?
No, I did.
I did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I just said number nine.
Then we still got eight, nine.
I would move that we've, either move eight or table it and go with nine, have the public comments.
I second that.
We moved a second, we, we move eight off the agenda and?
Move it to the bottom.
Move it to the bottom, sorry. And then proceed to item nine. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, turn the time over to Evan, our finance director, to present items regarding the budget, and then we'll proceed with the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We've been discussing the budget for many months now, and according to state law, we hold a public hearing before the budget is finally adopted, and so our public hearing has been advertised, and we'll hold that tonight. I prepared a staff report that you should have a copy of. We're planning to have the public hearing tonight and then final adoption in a week from tonight, on June twelfth. Since we, since you approved the tentative budget, we have identified a few additional changes that we would like to propose, and I'll, I'll summarize those briefly. The first is related to property tax. We have received an updated number, an updated revenue estimate on property tax, but the county, Weber County, has not yet released final numbers on that. So, we've incorporated the latest number that we have, knowing that it's probably not the final number. We're really hoping that they get us the final number before next week. But we've incorporated the number we have into the budget, which was higher than what we had previously estimated, but I wouldn't get too excited until we get a final number. The other thing we did with property tax is we separated out the RDA tax increment. In the past, that was combined with the general property tax, and we wanted to pull that out so that our budgeted property tax number would match the number that we get from the county. The RDA tax increment is the portion that the city has agreed to give up of our regular property tax money that, that goes to the redevelopment area. So that's just been separated into a separate line, as you can see in the budget. The community band is an item that has come up. We, we applied for a grant through the ramp program and received a two thousand dollar grant to help fund the community band, so we've added the revenue for the band, as well as the expenditure for that two thousand dollars, into the budget. And the other item that has changed since the tentative is a budget related to the realignment of the intersection at Twenty-five-Fifty North. This is a project the city has been working with UDOT to complete, and the city's portion of this project is fifty-four thousand dollars approximately. So we have added fifty-four thousand dollars to the budget, and we're proposing to use money from the transportation utility fund in order to pay our portion of that project. So those changes have been incorporated into the, the budget. Then just to summarize, I'll read through some of the major budget priorities that we have talked about before, that have been included in the budget. One new full-time police officer, one Parks position moving from part-time to full-time, the addition of a grant-funded victim advocate position, which is a part-time position, merit wage adjustments, market increase in lifeguard wages, one new full-time stormwater position, one new full-time water department position, a redesigned vehicle replacement program, preliminary work on the Twenty-six-hundred North Intersection Project, preliminary work on the new Stormwater Basin Community Pond Project, continued work on the Barker Park Amphitheater, which is funded in part through grants, replacement of a playground at North Ogden Park, Phase Three of the street lighting project on Washington Boulevard, regular road maintenance, preliminary work on a new water reservoir to facilitate new growth, continuation of the sewer pipe relining project, and completion of the new solid waste storage building. So those are the, the highlights in the budget, and we'll have a public hearing tonight, and then we'll propose the final adoption for next week. If you have any questions for me at this point, I'm happy to respond.
Any questions from the council? If not, we'll open the public hearing regarding Two Thousand Eighteen, Nineteen city budget.
Aaron Christensen, Twenty-four Twenty-eight Barker Parkway. Mr. Mayor and Council, my comments today are expressed with the hope that your leadership can help our city rise to challenges we face with growth, restraint, and fiscal responsibility. Also, in light of recent events, it's obvious that remaining silent is considered endorsement of the decisions that are made at the city level. Therefore, I am here to add my voice to the city record. Looking at the proposed North Ogden City budget for the coming year, there are several items that should raise concern for all citizens of our city. From paying to have flowers on light poles and have them watered, to building a five-acre community pond, to ever-growing taxes that have been labeled utility fee increases, and of course, building the largest municipal amphitheater in the state, our city government, I fear, has lost its vision of the proper role of government. Thanks to personal experience, I'm most aware of the current Barker Park Amphitheater project. The proposed budget asks for the expenditure of another nearly seven hundred thousand dollars of taxpayer money. Call it ramp, call it impact fees, call it general funds, it's not the city's money, it belongs to the taxpayers, and to continue to pour additional funds into this project as it is defined is reckless and wrong. To date, we have seen no evidence from the city there's any type of business plan for a commercial project being built in the park, and it is commercial, as it's considered by the contractor, on your SWIP plan. It is commercial, as in tomorrow night, the planning commission is looking at approving parking for a theater, which, according to city code, is zoned commercial. So it is a commercial project. Parks and Recreation Director Tiffany Staley recently testified under oath that the city only intends to use the amphitheater for theatrical productions, symphonies, weddings, festivals, recitals, talent shows, and the likes. In that like, consider the following costs. Power equipment for the new shop, upkeep on the equipment, insurance for when someone gets hurt using that equipment. How will you determine who gets to use that equipment? Is the city buying a grand piano for recitals? How will that piano be kept in tune in the hot and cold facility? If we're going to keep this, the facility level, does that mean we're going to install and run AC and heat year-round to keep the piano in tune? Are we hiring someone to clean up after the events? Who will pay for that? Who provides security, insurance? Can a piano teacher afford to rent out such a facility, even if we, even if we only charge enough to cover the costs of maintaining that facility for their event? We're not looking for a profit, as stated. If we don't recoup actual costs for using the facility for recitals, talent shows, et cetera, exactly how much are we expecting other citizens to pay to subsidize the use of this amphitheater? There are things that should be known before using taxpayer dollars in what then becomes an experiment. Some citizens are excited about shows coming in. However, according to Tiffany Staley's testimony, the city has no intent of bringing in large commercial events like rock shows. She said that under testimony. She said the city intends to focus using on community events. That testimony conflicts with statements from Mayor Taylor, who has encouraged concerts with Donnie and Marie, Tears for Fears, and even a rave. As members of the Arts and, as a member of the Arts and Ant Committee, I've started looking into contracts associated with some of those shows. According to booking agents, Donnie and Marie charged between one hundred fifty thousand and two hundred thousand dollars just to show up. That doesn't include transportation, staffing, security, food, equipment, or a number of other expenses. There are other conflicts between what, what the city says and, and even between members of the city. In the October presentation of the update on the amphitheater, Mayor Taylor said that parking would be, they would consider either four or five persons per vehicle to determine parking. A member of the city council recently stated that you would only sell tickets for three members per vehicle, and yet tomorrow, at the planning commission, the proposal is for a theater, which is six people per amp, per vehicle. There's no continuity, and you can see why there's frustration on our level. So either the city is deceiving purposely, they're just saying what they think people want to hear and hopefully will go away, or they have no idea. And the third is the easiest to fix, and I'm hoping that that's what it is. We can simply push pause and get citizens' input and wait and get the? and wait and get the right answers before we go forward spending more money. There are too many questions still unanswered. Pouring more money into this project is reckless. You, the administration, council, and staff are currently only guessing at what cost will, cost will be. After multiple discussions with management at other amphitheaters, it's obvious that there's much more involved here than if you build it, they will come. Citizens need to know what's really going to cost year in and year out before they agree with this. And if they don't agree with it, then the simplest answer is, is elections. And I appreciate the service that you each render. But I would ask you to please put this phase on hold. There are other places in the city that need the money more. Other people are paying into the park impact fees and their neighborhoods don't have parks yet. Don't experiment with our tax dollars, please. Thank you.
Could we get that doc, a copy of that document for, and hit? Thank you for your comment.
I'm Melanie Barker at 2524 Barker Parkway. Um, I found it interesting tonight, um, these are some of the words I've heard. We're going to stick to our commitments that we've made to residents. We're going to stick to our, um, contracts. The Barker family made a contract with North Ogden City 20 years ago. The city made contracts with the residents 20 years ago. The Barker family sold property to the city at $37,500 an acre. The city turned around and sold it for $60,000 a half acre to the residents with all kinds of requirements that they had to follow to build a home there. On the North Ogden, um, Facebook page, there are many lies going around about how much money the Barkers made off of the city. The city is the one that made the money off the Barkers. Um, um, they've required us to build with brick. On the city Facebook page, the neighbors have been ridiculed, told our homes were ugly, they needed to be torn down. They call them McMansions, all because the city required the citizens that purchased those properties to build those large homes. Now, the contract that you signed and the plan that you showed those residents for their homes to be built there was a city park with boweries and picnic tables and a playground and an amphitheater for a classroom to learn about the Indians that used to live in Barker Park. What's there, the amphitheater today, is not the stick-to-commitments the city made to the Barkers. Every time we have a new city council, a new mayor, we have to fight over Barker Park. Enough is enough. $800,000 this year, $700,000 next year. Aaron told you how much it is to get people to come in. I went to Davis Arts Council and listened to them. To get somebody like Terry Fader was only $75,000. And he's a ventriloquist, if you don't know. That was just him. That's not security, transportation, nothing. So this amphitheater is going to be a dark, dark hole that money will be poured down all the time. I'm a piano teacher, I could never afford to rent a facility like that to have a piano recital. To have a grand piano there, you're looking at $80,000, easy, for a grand piano that has to be kept in air condition and heat all year long. It needs to be tuned probably almost every time you have a recital or something, because when you move pianos, they have to be tuned again. Consider that when you, um, decide to spend more money on Barker Park Amphitheater. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Barker.
Sean Casey, 2444 Barker Parkway. That was excellent. I have a few things to add with a different perspective. I'm a professional in the industry that would support the amphitheater. You guys have no idea what you're doing. I said at the first meeting I met with you and Brett Taylor Sherrill, you guys are clueless. When was the last time you went to a real show? I mean, think about that. We have one 10 minutes away. When do you guys go to these things? You're making decisions. I, I really am so confused about this thing. We have a roof on something. Most of the bands, and the only way you're going to make money, by the way, is with bands. Plays don't make money, none of them. Uh, Sandy, talk to Sandy, talk to Davis Arts Council, they don't hold it. Kurt Bateman is your biggest drama guy in the, well, that I've met in the state. So, problems. You have a roof. How many bands are going to play with a roof on your amphitheater? Not many. How many bands are going to show up when you don't have, when they don't have complete control over the, the artistic content? Nobody that is up and coming. The only people you're going to get is has-beens. Styx, D.B. Brothers. I mean, sure, they're great bands. They were great in their day, but they're washed up. And they play little amphitheaters for municipalities, municipalities for $200,000 because they like to relive their glory days. Artistic content is not what they're worrying about. The other big problem is state-controlled content? I mean, this isn't 1932, this isn't the KPS. You guys aren't trying to give Volkswagen Beetles to, to citizens, I hope. You have to really think about the First Amendment problems you're getting into. And that's the big problem with our amphitheater. You can't control content. You try to control content and it's a big, big lawsuit, one that'll be, it'll consume our city. You shouldn't do this.
Thank you, Mr. Casey.
Brett Hamblin, 963 Deer Meadows Drive. I'm not happy with the consideration of spending more money on the, uh, Amp Barker Park Amphitheater, but, uh, all the discussion, everything on that brings the, the part that I want to talk about. It, it's real obvious, with all the meetings I've been to, all the discussions and so forth, that there wasn't a whole lot of in-depth investigation and planning prior to diving in with the amphitheater. Uh, when Mayor Taylor was asked at one of the meetings, what's it going to cost us yearly for upkeep for the facility? I was admittedly shocked when he said, "Well, once it's done, we'll find out." To me, it's like, no, give me an estimate now and let the taxpayers know if they want to spend that kind of money. Okay, that all being said, discussion with the community pond really has me worried because I've heard no planning, no discussions, nothing on, on it other than just talking with a few people that have heard bits and pieces someplace. A five-acre pond that people can fish in or whatever? Where's the water going to come from? How's it going to be maintained? There's not a river flowing through here that can keep fresh water in something like that. I'm very nervous about jumping in with that project with as little planning as was done on the amphitheater project. So I'm very concerned with spending that money until there's more in-depth evaluation, planning. Uh, and, and open public, like I said, I haven't seen or heard anything other than rumors and rumblings. And here it is listed on the agenda, community pond. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamblin.
Mr. Mayor, City Councilman. My name's Kevin Mickelson, 837 East, 2750 North. Um, what I'd like to do is hand to you a list that you might be fairly interested in. I hope, I hope we all are. What I've just delivered is a copy of a list of taxes that we as American citizens, both federal, state, and local, as well as, um, anyway, um, for personal and business sources. And there currently, and I think this is actually an outdated list, there's, there's 99 listed on there. And to tell you the truth, I think our founding fathers would be absolutely beside themselves and rolling over their inner graves for the kinds of taxation that they fought for and fought for, fought against. Um, it's just so happens, I happen to be a descendant of Samuel Adams. And if we know what history tells us about Samuel Adams and how he was basically the perpetrator of the Rev- of the Revolution against the British for excess taxation. We need to really think about any kind of exa- uh, extra fees that are being imposed on citizens regardless. Um, government on all levels, federal, state, and local, need to tighten their belts. Families have to do it. Governments should be held just as responsible. In the last 13 years, I have never received a pay increase at the two different jobs that I've been in. But now on the, on the list, we see that there's, uh, proposed, uh, wage increases for city, city workers. Isn't that interesting how by the swat, by the stroke of a pen, more money can be taken from taxpayers' pocketbooks? When, where are we going to get our extra money to help pay for these offsets? I know $5.78 isn't very much for per month for the, uh, for the proposed, uh, fee increases. But when is it going to be another five bucks? In a couple of years? Couple more years, it's going to be another five bucks. It's just going to continue to go up until somebody puts a stop to it. We all know that federal government is beyond its control. It's, it's, it's a bloated bureaucracy and so many different programs. The state is getting to be the same way. We don't have to follow in their footsteps. We should actually be setting an example of fiscal responsibility. Wherever we can find ways to tighten our belts, families got to do it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment.
Bob Napoli, 816 East, 2750 North. I'm really concerned about the spending and the budget taking place. I hear in saying you're proposing hiring more employees. You know, 12 years ago, from 12 years ago, the, uh, population of North Ogden probably gone up 20%. Our utility rates have gone up 120%. I now pay $5 to North Ogden for Comcast TV. I pay $12 to North Ogden for the privilege of having cell phones. You know, besides all of those other taxes. We are taking money that, in the past, we had to self-sustain our own self for you, for things that now we get rent money for. And so we're, we're getting money from outside, but yet we're still increasing at this point, 100% more than 12, than 12 years ago on utilities, and you're proposing more. It just does not make sense. It does not make sense to have, to add employees when we only have that many, uh, population growth. I consider, I, I would wish that you would consider sharpening those pencils, breaking those pencils, actually, and, uh, getting back to just taking care of what we need to do and not fishing in a pond and other type things like that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Napoli.
Scott Barker, 2592 North Barker Parkway. Um, I get a little concerned when I hear about the amount of money spent on amphitheater and where the money's coming from. And a thought keeps crossing my mind, is, is there going to be any money left to do the rest of the park? I always give the people tongue-in-cheek. I'll be dead before it ever starts. And at that time, the easement will no longer be around because 2048 will become and gone. At that point, whoever's in the city council, that's, well, we can build houses and just get rid of it. We can't afford to do anything with it anyway. Where are we going? You know, that amphitheater is never going to pay for itself. It'll never be self-sustaining. It's always going to have to have extra money come from somewhere for upkeep and taking care of it. And nobody's ever said, where's that money coming from? So I really get concerned because of this, the rest of parks will get shot right down the tubes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barker, for your comment.
Uh, Kim Christensen, 2428 Barker Parkway. Um, I just want to stand to and voice my concerns with, um, the fiscal responsibility of our city and, uh, doing what they're supposed to be doing. I don't think that the government should be playing in, in entertainment, um, providing fishing ponds, amphitheaters, you name it. Our roads that everybody use need to be taken care of. Other things that everybody use need to be taken care of. We need to take care of our citizens. Um, several of us have tried to reach out. Um, we did go down and meet with the Davis Arts Council. And we even invited to have a few of the council members come with us so that they too could see what the cost would be for this amphitheater. And it wouldn't just be coming from us. And we were declined. To me, that shows that you don't care what it costs. That you're just going to go ahead and move forward with it no matter what you want to do or no matter what we are saying. That's very concerning. It worries me. How much is this pond going to cost? Not only to build, but to maintain. Are we going to have insurance for it in case somebody gets hurt or drowns? It will be on the city's shoulders. What is the next project that's going to be coming? It is concerning. When does it stop? Are we considering the people of this city, North Ogden City, why people are moving here and live here? We've had so many come forward and say, "I live here because it has a country feel." And that's being taken away. Consider the feelings of people and why they are here. Longtime residents and those that are moving in. I plead with you. Consider how you would feel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Christensen, for your comment.
Good evening. I am Peggy Barker at 2553 North Fruitland Drive. Uh, as we look at the budget, of course, I was, uh, brought up very frugal with a mother who had gone through the depression. But I've also now been watching this amazing building being built in the park. It's beautiful, like the architect said it would be. The outside structure is there. I don't understand an idea of stopping midway without sound, without lights, without interior space, with a building which is partially kind of ready to be used and to not continue with the building. Also, Scott and I sat on the Barker Park Committee and we gave our hearts, our souls to it for the rest of the park to be developed. And, uh, yes, Mayor Taylor said this would be the beginning. We would see the rest of the park. We would see the rest of the park grow from this amphitheater. And I believe that can happen still, that as people come to the amp and enjoy productions, that the rest of Barker Park will gradually be created. We will have that monument for the Native Americans. I look across there, I can't drive past it without hearing the sound of music, without hearing some of my favorite themes. It's the voice of Julie Andrews which circulates around it. I know it can be a special place. It has the potential. We need to continue on with it. And maybe, maybe the pond needs to be delayed while we take care of this and continue it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barker, for your comment.
I'm, oh, I'm being videoed, right? I'm Brandon Mason, eleven fourteen east, thirty-three hundred north. I think we all know each other. I just, I'm kind of arrogant, or not kind of arrogant, I guess, but I'm kind of ignorant about the overall budget. I wasn't here for the meeting. I just heard a comment about line item in there for, "Why does public speaking make me nervous?" I was, like, so confident in the hall, but... I heard a comment in there about a line item for employee salaries, and I just want to say my opinion on that as a resident, that I support a competitive wage for our city employees. And I feel like I am their employer as a resident here. I feel like you guys are their bosses, and I support competitive wages, not to overpay, but not to underpay either. I think if we leave out things like annual increases, I think that leads to turnover, which eventually costs the city more when we have to train and things like that. So, as someone who's just in the workforce and has enjoyed annual increases my whole career, I support those types of actions for deserving employees. So, I just wanted to give a plug for that. I know there's dissension to that, I understand that. I'm not someone who believes that just because someone's employed by the city, that they're doing it for some higher purpose that doesn't include money. I mean, we all have jobs to provide for our families, and I just want you to consider that when thinking about employee salaries. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mason, for your comment.
Motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion to close the public hearing by Councilman Swanson.
Second.
Have a second by Councilman Turner. Throw in the vote with Council Severy.
Yes.
Councilman Turner?
Yes.
Councilman Stoker?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes.
Councilman Barker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you for your comments this evening. Well, now proceed with the joint session agenda with the city council and the planning commission. Third time over to planning commission?
Yep.
They'll come to this table?
Well, actually, everyone will go to the table.
Everybody goes to the table.
That way, you can actually intermingle and discuss.
Okay, council, move to the table.
Okay. Sorry, I should have been there.
That's your seat. Actually, it was this, and I was eating cake or whatever. Is there any cake? Well, I guess that the last time we did this, that video, and I was, like, going to town on some cake. One of my...
He kind of looks like him.
Yeah. He thought it was coming over. Coke? Did you see that?
There was, oh, there might have been.
How about you? You're sitting around.
I'm good. I've been doing some tensing.
Oh, have you?
My hands are twisted wires.
Oh, my gosh, it's so sore. Oh, yeah.
I thought you meant...
It's an idea. Oh, it's a idea.
It's bad. It's crazy.
Should I get started?
There's a mess. It's not going to pull the first page.
No, Brandon, this is a long side.
We all listen down, what's that?
I don't want to borrow that. What are you doing?
I wish it were, I wish it was bigger.
Long chair on a wheelbarrow.
I'm sitting right here. Are you sitting down?
Yep.
Mike Blake?
Good to see you. Good. Good to see you. Oh, I don't hear it. Carol, I will. Sure. Cheryl, come down. Do you even...
Ah, yeah. I know.
I didn't know what to bring. I just got, I think there's just one project.
Okay, welcome to the planning commission. I don't have my gavel, huh?
You want it?
That's what I'm ordered. Discussion on Washington Boulevard streetscape, Mayor Rob Scott.
Thanks, Mayor. Commissioners and council members, audience, we have three things to discuss this evening. And as a part of the items that we have, this first one, we put, because we believe it's a fairly short item, then we have a little report to give the council on the progress of our form-based code and ask you a little bit about how you would like to proceed with respect to the public outreach component of that project. And last but not least, we have a master plan community zone application that we're going to be sharing with you with respect to the Double Lot Ranch property. So let me begin by sharing with you that we have been working on doing an update as part of the improvements that are going along Washington Boulevard. There have been a number of site plans that have been proposed along there. We have some very outdated standards with it comes to the trees and the tree species that are to be installed along that streetscape. We have a very narrow, in some instances, very narrow streetscape, and in some others, we have a sizable streetscape. So what do you do? What is the appropriate cross-section for that? What we've done is we've hired two interns from Weaver State. We have Kai Johnson that's here, and Don Cantwell was not able to be with us, so. Yes, want to be recognized. They've done a nice job. And the process will be that once we have some additional information, we'll be bringing that to planning commission and then on to the city council. But there's one aspect of it is part of the review. We have, you know, multi-talented staff here in the, in the community, and Evan Nelson, who's the budget director also, is a trained horticulturist. So we've been able to draw on his expertise when it comes to plants and so forth. So, the one thing that we'd like to propose is that the city council would give us a tentative thumbs up on allowing for, to be consistent with our long tradition of cherry days, et cetera, to approve cherry trees as the tree along Washington Boulevard. So we've got, and that while you're there, why don't you turn the light off, and then we'll be all seated. So this is up at the state capitol, and we have a number of shots here showing how beautiful these blossoms could be, and I think that would be an appropriate thing to do, would be to utilize these two species of cherry tree. Now, the reason why we have two species is that sometimes, some trees are not available so that you can get to a secondary tree species and make it work. Any questions? Go ahead, Brandon, have a comment.
I'd like to add one comment.
Please.
One of the reasons why the staff is proposing this is because, as you go along Washington Boulevard, you'll, you know that there's the existing power lines on both sides of the street at different points. And were those not to be there, you know, on a streetscape as wide as Washington? One, the typical goal would be to put a much larger tree species in to cover more of the right-of-way from a design perspective. That would be the design goal. The challenge is, is we don't know when or if those will get put underground or moved. And so, we're trying to find a tree that works both in the existing circumstances with the existing power poles or without any adventure, and the possibility that those are to get put underground or moved elsewhere. And so, we're trying to find a solution that works in both scenarios. And this is what we came up with, that also, this is, these are the trees that we came up with that fit that, you know, existing situation, but also tie into the heritage and character of North Ogden City with the cherry days, you know, that already occur and that helps build a sense of identity and character and heritage in the city. So, those were the bases for, basis for making this recommendation.
So let me ask if you have any questions, and if we could get a thumbs up on the tree species, that'd be marvelous. If you want us to do some more work, we'll be happy to do that.
I have two questions. One, are these non-fruving trees?
Yes, they are. They're flowering.
Just flowering only, okay. The second is, these are trees that we will be expecting individuals who develop along Washington to put in. This isn't for the city to go along and put it all the way down ourselves, correct?
Probably a combination along the way, if we have. But there have been, in a couple of instances, where we have indicated to site plan review applicants that the city's in the process of determining trees, and we've asked them to hold up on the trees so that they would then, once we have this tree species identified, we can work with them so that they can then install these trees.
My only concern is, I love the idea, being that my father-in-law's an incredible horticulturist, I've learned a lot, but I'm not as experienced as Evan. Did I hear that, Evan, did I say you're a horticulturist?
I am.
I think the thing I would say is, if we're going to do something like that, when you buy a tree, the tree has to have good form from the very beginning. Otherwise, they start taking these weird shapes. And I see you're smiling and agreeing with me. If we're going to do something like that, we'd have to make sure that they're well-formed from the very beginning, so they don't start taking that weird...
How do you legislate that? Beauties in the eye of the beholder, right?
Look good.
So many branches per foot.
There are some trees that are more well-formed than others.
Well, and we do have standards with respect to that type of thing.
Okay.
And it's going to take some work as far as pruning and making sure they're watered, et cetera, et cetera, so. Yeah, good comments.
So my question or comment was on the same line in the sense that we need to make sure we specify the caliber of tree.
Sure.
And all of that stuff, you know?
We'll make sure that as this goes forward to the planning commission, that we'll include those kinds of things to make sure that they're a part of it.
As far as, like, maintenance of the trees, that would be...
We have, we have a very outdated document that was used in the past for street trees, and it does contain those types of things. And we'll ensure that those are included as part of the overall program.
Because I know the citizens are concerned, and I think they're beautiful, so I know it's opinion-based, but some citizens are concerned about the beauty of the flowers. Takes a lot to maintain trees?
Yes, it does.
Takes a lot to maintain trees to keep the proper look?
So the streetscape includes everything from the sidewalk to the grass, to the trees, to the streetlights, to the street furniture, the UTA bus areas, to the utility lines, et cetera. All of those things are a component part of it.
Wasn't there some, some thought into what the effect these trees would have on the sidewalk, and that they, they aren't one of those trees that come up and ruin a sidewalk? Didn't we discuss that in the planning commission? I think we heard something about that. We did a site visit recently, Eric, or Mr. Thomas and I, that we saw oak trees that had just wrecked havoc on the sidewalk, and basically, the city where we were touring said they'd never, you know, they loved those trees, they're beautiful, but they would never advise to planting those.
We already have a standard to tell us the trees we plant in the park strip, which some are flowering plums or whatever, and they don't...
I was just making sure that those, those same principles have been looked at with these.
Yeah, I think this tree's the same type, I think.
This is very similar to a flowering plum. I wouldn't anticipate that would be a big issue with this size of a tree. You know, oaks are, you know, three times the big as this typically, so you're going to get a lot smaller root structure on these, and it's not going to have nearly as much F to lift the sidewalk as a tree. And again, that goes back to the reason that the size of the tree is smaller is so that it can fit under the power, the existing power lines. You know, in thirty years, if those power lines are still there, there'll need to be some trimming, probably, but there is a tree that can survive under those power lines and still look decent.
So root barriers, those types of things are very typical to make sure that that's dealt with.
Now, I have a question, though, regarding that, and maybe you guys can answer. Some trees, like a peach tree, a thirty-year-old peach tree is a really old tree. How do these hold up in time?
I think that these have, if I recall correctly, they have a forty to sixty-year lifespan. So it's on the longer end of this size of tree.
The next question is, is this tree included in, you know, because we do have a parking strip, is this tree, you know, since the cherry days thing and everything, is this tree already included in the, as an approved tree in the parking strip for the rest of the city? It should be. And should we even encourage it everywhere else in the city, not just on Washington?
Those are excellent questions.
Is it an approved tree?
Why don't you make it so?
I don't remember it being approved. I know flowering plum and pear, I think, come up, it's not in my mind that are in the park strip.
Our ordinance references a document out of the state of Washington that's no longer in print. So, I mean, it's, I mean, it's the nature of this type of thing. You establish in your best judgment what is appropriate, and then it's time to update it. And that's where we...
as much F to lift the sidewalk as a, as a tree. And that's, and again, that goes back to the reason that the size of the tree is smaller is so that it can fit under the power, the existing power lines. You know, in 30 years, if those power lines are still there, there'll need to be some trimming probably, but there is a tree that can survive under those power lines and still look decent.
So root barriers, those types of things are very typical to make sure that that's a, that's dealt with.
I have a question though regarding that, and maybe you guys can answer. Some trees, like a peach tree, a 30-year-old peach tree is a really old tree. How do these hold up in time?
I think that these have a, if I recall correctly, they have a 40 to 60-year lifespan. So it's, it's on the longer end of this size of tree.
The next question is, is this tree included in, you know, because we do have a parking strip. Is this tree, you know, since the cherry days thing and everything, is this tree already included in the, as an approved tree in the parking strip for the rest of the city? And it should be. And should we even encourage it everywhere else in the city? Not just on Washington?
Those are excellent questions.
Is it an approved tree?
Why don't you make it so?
I don't, I don't remember it being approved. I know, I know flowering plum and pear, I think, come up out of my mind that are in the park strip.
Our ordinance references a document out of the state of Washington that's no longer in print. So, I mean, it's, I mean, it's the nature of this type of thing. You establish in your best judgment what is appropriate, and then it's time to update it. And that's where we find ourselves. It's time to update this, provide for an appropriate range of things, so as far as the tree species and so forth.
Is, is this the same variety of tree that's found in Washington DC that draws the, the crowds?
It's one of them.
Okay.
And there's, there's actually two that we're recommending, Yoschino and Akapana. They're, they're very, very similar. The color's slightly different and they have a different, slightly different typical spread, but they're the most similar that, that the characteristics, then would be, you know, one would be a decent substitute for the other if availability was low in one species.
So it seems like one day, when this develops out and fills in, this is an economic development opportunity, right? Some kind of a feel like this that will bring people to, oh, let's go, it's not, they're not gonna come from Washington DC here, right? But, you know, people in South Ogden, hey, let's go to North Ogden, see that it's blossom season. Let's drive up through North Ogden, they stop, they get an ice cream, they go home. You know, I mean, we're talking years in the future, but, you know, this is the, this is the groundwork for that. This is kind of an idea, and I like it.
Did you get Jesse's input from Parks and Rec?
Not on this specific idea, but I'm happy to reach out to him.
We've had a, a staff committee that's been working on this project.
I'm not saying that they're not, but he's also...
Yeah. No, Parks and Recreation has been a part of this from day one.
Now, there's, there are more than the two, two tree species, there's, aren't there? Because I've seen some of the flowering cherry trees that have got a double or triple blossom, and the ones that you're showing here are just a single blossom.
Yeah, I don't remember all of the specifics of why we chose these. A major consideration was height and spread. I'm guessing that the ones that have a double or triple blossom probably were smaller height and spread, so they weren't gonna accomplish as much per tree.
And that might be, because the one, the one I'm thinking of does seem to be a smaller tree, so that could be.
I, I could be wrong, but I believe these have a fall blossom as well. Does that, they do not? Okay. One, one idea that has come up between Evan and myself is the fact that the city was interested in pursuing this idea but wanting to get a jumpstart. I mean, it's, it's not much given the timing, but, you know, to plant, plant some test trees, maybe out on city property, and see how those do so that we have just a little bit of advanced information. You know, it wouldn't necessarily need to be along Washington Boulevard, but just maybe out here on the south side of the property somewhere, or in the, in the park strip, assuming that they're allowed. We follow our own rules. But just so that we, you know, give us a year or two heads up and see what those trees are doing or whatever, you know, so.
And some of you may or may not know, but Brandon Bell has a degree in landscape architecture, so we have two experts in this field.
How close are you planning on putting them? How far apart?
I don't know that we've determined that. They probably have a specified or recommended tree canopy.
Or how many per block?
You know, just, my first guess would be that you'd probably want to space them a maximum of 25 feet apart, given their height and spread. You probably want a little bit of overlap of the branches, and that would allow full maturity that they may, they either come close to touching or overlap a little bit. I don't think you want a lot of space between the branches, it would get kind of a lollipop effect, you know, and not as consistent of a, of a stream of blossoms. So I'd recommend probably 25 feet. Might need to adjust that a few feet one way or the other.
Wouldn't affect the light poles being covered?
No, they, I mean, we'd probably have to make an exception for where light poles are spaced, you know, like some, you know, 25 feet with exceptions made for, you know, to accommodate light, existing light poles or future planning locations for light poles. But I think that, you know, the, the light poles and the cherry trees would probably mix well together in terms of the overall look for the streetscape of those two elements.
So there's a lot of detail that's yet to come forth. You're all, you're asking the right questions relative to this. The detailed design will come back to you as a part of that.
So Rob, would, if you would know, or, right now, if there's a sidewalk that's been buckled by a tree root, is there an ordinance that talks about the homeowner or somebody, whoever has to, do they take that tree out? And the reason I'm asking that is if it's along Washington and we adopt this, would that mean if there's a buckled sidewalk, the homeowner would have to take that tree out and then have to replace it with one of these trees? Or what would we, or is that just something we'd wanna think about?
Well, I think the root barrier idea should handle 99% of that.
On, on this tree, but what about trees that have already damaged the sidewalk? Do we have, do we have anything there?
We have an ordinance that talks about them, that they need to be pulled out and the damage repaired, especially if it's a tree that was specifically prohibited from being planted within a certain distance.
Okay, so for instance, we have one, they pull it out, they would be allowed to put this tree back if this is adopted, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. I think there's not a lot of Washington right now with this sidewalk. So Rob, are you guys looking for a decision or just?
Just a kind of a thumbs up on the, the tree, just recognize that we've got a lot of work yet to be done as far as developing standards and having the overall streetscape. And it's gonna be block by block, so it's gonna be a very detailed plan when we come back to you.
My recommendation would be to follow Brandon's, Brandon's thought about maybe just planting a couple of them, seeing how they, on city property. Because I got to the point where as I was coming along Washington, some of the trees that were there, they just, they didn't look very good. Their form was lost and really like to see real nice tree.
The, I mean, that's a great idea for a proof of concept, right? Like a try it before you buy it? The problem here is we have development happening on Washington, and it would be nice to have, right, as these site plans are approved, for them, for us to say, this is what we're doing tree-wise, right? And not keep these guys in limbo and not have anything there? So, so if you, if we proceed that cautiously, it just delays this a couple of years while those trees grow. I mean, wouldn't you rather see some pictures of some grown trees? I mean, it's 2018, we can probably, there's an internet, like...
I don't think there's a lot of risk involved in the particular species of tree you're talking about.
I agree, and I think that it's, it's probably more important that we have the guidelines on, on how the trees are, you know, watered and pruned and taken care of than it is to necessarily see how they grow, because I think a lot of times where we see trees in cities that end up looking really shabby and really bad, they're in areas where they were planted with no sprinkler system or something like that, and so then they just get left to do whatever they do.
So in, in my career, you do everything in test before you do it in production environment, right? And so that doesn't preclude, we still have that, and you could figure out the watering and the, and the, and the staff could learn how to prune them and that kind of stuff with your test area here, but I don't think that should delay this decision to move forward with this, if this is something you're interested in. And you already know I am.
Have you talked to Ogden City with the trees that they planted and the problems that they had? I think they took several of them out because it was too busy. They couldn't, they couldn't see the, the commercial businesses or stuff that were there, and they became more of a headache than they were an asset. So I think you should check with some other cities before we decide we want to do a whole row, a whole, the whole street in trees. To me, that looks too busy. I don't, I know it's just a picture, but I don't like that at all. It's too busy.
Well, it's also only 10 feet apart. It's not, you know, 100 feet apart, which would, would be out on Washington.
It's true, it's narrow, right?
Yeah.
We will come back with some standards so you can take a look at them and ask some more questions.
But I would like you to talk to...
Oh, I was there when they were put in. That's how old I am.
And I want to report back. Thank you.
No, I know exactly what some of the problems were. Probably has to do with root barriers and...
Well, a lot of it's, is site. On the businesses that are there too. I mean, as an example, Wendy's said their business, I don't remember the percentages that went up, but when those pine trees came down, their business went up a huge amount because people could see they were there, and they knew where they could turn in or where they could come out at. Although the residents didn't like it because they had no shade, but the business liked it.
There, there's a balance to all of this stuff.
There always is. You have to find the correct one.
I love the concept of the cherry tree and the identity for North Ogden with the cherry days. And having lived in Washington DC for several years, but the draw and the beauty of that blooming, you know, cherry tree season is pretty spectacular. So for people to, you know, a draw for people to come down to North Ogden and take a look and maybe go to some of our businesses, and it could really be kind of a cool thing that, that creates that, you know, sort of that destination identity during at least that blooming season.
And just to add to that, I think one perspective that needs to be kept in mind is that if you're looking, this starts to tie into the Form Based Code. If you're looking at, if we get to the point where we're heading towards adopting the Form Based Code, the street trees are a critical component in that development model for a downtown. And to try and do a Form Based Code without a significant street tree makes it a much less walkable environment. And so there are components, there, and the, the model of development under a Form Based Code has parts that if you take them away, then the, the whole model suffers. And so you have to sort of decide to a certain degree whether you want that whole model as a kit or don't want the model at all, rather than pulling certain pieces from it. Because if you pull certain critical pieces from it, then the whole model falls apart. The elements reinforce one another under a Form Based Code, and, and, and street trees are a critical element of a Form Based Code. So I'm not arguing for or against, I'm just saying there's a certain threshold that you have to meet, and, and this is one of those for a Form Based Code to work, and, and good street trees is, is one of those critical elements, and so that I think that should probably be taken into consideration.
Rob, the gentleman you had?
Kai Johnson.
Thoughts?
I, I, all of the points are valid. Having walked that stretch multiple times and doing the inventory, some of the trees are in rough shape, and I'm identifying where the trees could be irrigated from, things like that. I really think that would be great to see that, especially with the road as wide as it is to have those trees placed there to kind of lead you from the entrance to North Ogden down to this end of the town.
Thank you.
So, everybody marginally accepting this one go forward?
I'm not sure we know where Brandon stands.
I want a plum tree or a banana tree.
Pineapple tree.
Thanks. So the next discussion is gonna be handled by Brandon, who's been, who is an expert when it comes to Form Based Code, and he has spent a considerable amount of time on this along with the Planning Commission. He's gonna be introducing and reviewing this outline as far as the public outreach aspect of the review for the Form Based Code. So I'll turn it over to Brandon.
So I'm gonna hand out a, just sort of an outline of questions and considerations, and then we'll need to provide a copy to Annette for the public record. We put a lot of work into the Form Based Code. I hope my expertise has not been greatly exaggerated. We've done, we've tried to make a number of edits to the Form Based Code to bring it to what, to the Planning Commission's satisfaction and considered a number of issues in that process. Just one note, the, the, this agenda item for tonight is not, the, part of that agenda item is not the content of the 140 pages of the Form Based Code. I'm guessing that you'll, you're relieved to hear that. There, there, what, but rather what we're trying to address tonight is how you wanna approach public outreach and the public hearing requirements for the Form Based Code. There, the requirement for that, the basic requirement for public outreach is that there be two public hearings, one that involves the city, the Planning Commission, and the second that involves the City Council. But we also recognize as staff that this is a, a different, a bit of a different situation than our typical zoning text amendment. This is a zoning text amendment, but functionally speaking, from, you know, the perspective of, of this document, this document is essentially adopting a new, entirely new zoning code is, were it to pass for the downtown area of, of North Ogden City. And so, you know, the amount of legislative change that's occurring with this document is orders of magnitude greater than would be typically occurring in a zoning text amendment. And for that reason, we feel it deserves unique consideration as to what the process should be. The background is, that's relevant, is that the Planning Commission has held approximately 10 meetings, approximately one per, per chapter for the Form Based Code, or one per section for, for the Form Based Code. A number of those meetings had in-depth discussion on the provisions in the code and the principles on which the code is based. The, the second piece of background is that the, the final part of the, the Form Based Code as far as meeting public notice requirements and public hearing requirements with regards to the Planning Commission is that their public hearing has not yet been held. We wanted to have this conversation before that was held. And, but the entirety of the code has been reviewed with them, and a number of, of in-depth changes have been made in preparation for that public hearing and a vote by the Planning Commission. The, so we've given a number of public outreach options, and so the point of this discussion item is simply to determine what general approach the Planning Commission and the City Council want to pursue in, as we move forward with the public hearing requirements for the, for the Form Based Code. Those options include just a standard public hearing with the Planning Commission, which would then be followed up with a, a separate public care, public hearing with the City Council. Another potential option is that we could do a joint public hearing with both the Planning Commission and the City Council, since it's such a big legislative item. The thinking there would be that it might be good to have everyone in the same room for, for one public hearing so that the public input is, is here, heard from, by both bodies so that, you know, it's such a big issue that you wouldn't have to rely on minutes. And a summarized, summary of those notes, you'd be able to hear it all in once and make sure that you're getting the vibe, the overall vibe of the community and where it stands on the document. The, a next option would be to have an open house, to gather that input and see how this, how this public feels about it. And then, this is not exactly public outreach in the same sense as the, these other options, but, you know, probably as, as a planner, one of my, the, the most key considerations I really try and take in to consideration is, I want to make sure that, should this code be adopted, that it's adopted with fully informed consent. You know, there's, there's, this is a, a big change in the regulation in, in the city. I'm not arguing for or against that, but Form Based Code is a different duck. It requires, going back to my comment a second ago about there being a threshold, there's a certain model you have to do in Form Based Code, or it's best probably if you don't do it. It has to do, the, the key item is vehicular access. You want vehicular access to, in almost all cases, to come from the rear. There are exceptions to that, but overwhelming you, and so what we're really talking about is, is alleys. Alleys and what we call internal streets. There are variations on an alley that allow access to the rear of, and what that allows is so that the building is right up to the, the sidewalk or close to it, and there's not a layer of parking between the buildings and the, and the sidewalk. And the reason why is that the, the core principle of a Form Based Code is this principle of walkability. If, creating a pleasant street environment for pedestrians. And when you start to put the parking in the, between the building and the sidewalk, it radically diminishes the ability to have that pleasant streetscape and create a walkable environment. And again, I'm not arguing for or against that walkable environment, but it's, it's, it's not very easy or doesn't usually turn out well if you try to do a hybrid model. And so you have to make, you kind of have to focus, you know, my suggestion would be that you focus your decisions on the Form Based Code as to, based on that principle of whether you buy into requiring that walkability model. Because if you're, if you're not sold on that principle, then you're gonna have a hard time implementing the Form Based Code in a way that achieves the goal that it, it promises to provide. And so my point being that I would suggest that the City Council have a number of, of discussion sessions where you're brought up to speed on the basic principles of the code and how it pulls off this prin- where you're brought up to speed on the basic principles of the code and how it pulls off this principle of walkability. I don't think we'd need to go in as much depth as the planning commission. But again, I don't want you to have buyer's remorse. I'm trying to make sure that you have a fully informed decision so that this is something, because if, if you don't have, for lack of a better term, conversion to the principles of the form-based code, then it's going to undermine the form-based code. And, you know, after it's adopted, there won't be support of the staff, you know, enforcing the requirements that are necessary to achieve success. And, and there won't be, because there won't be educate, you know, the education level necessary to, to have that support. And so I, I really feel it's important that, you know, you have a, a good grounding in the fundamentals of the principles of the code. Because they are, they're very different than suburban development that you find up on the, on the, on the hillside. And then the final point is that you could do any combination of the above options. So that's, that's an overview. Feel free to give me comments, thoughts, questions.
After having gone through it, it is a different enough animal. But I think the city council really needs to get probably not all of it, but a few of the things. The, you know, the districts, the street types, building types, as, as a minimum. Just to kind of understand where all of this is going and the reason for and everything.
And then the trees make more sense too.
It does. All of the discussion about the trees that we had earlier makes more sense in the context of, of this. But, you know, the chicken's way out would be just to have a public hearing and pass it to the city council. And city council has a public hearing and stuff. That's be quite, by far the easiest, but.
Yeah, I, I.
You say, it really leaves open the whole buyer's remorse thing.
Yeah, I'm trying to do, you know, I'm trying to do this in, in balance between being expeditious in terms of time and the fact that every day goes by that, you know, opportunities may be missed. But at the same time, I'm trying to avoid easy because I think that's going to lead to problems. You need, you need some grit to stick by this plan if you're going to implement it. And if I would be doing you a disservice if I didn't state that straight up at, at this point in time. I don't want to be in a position where, you know, I haven't been fulfilled what I'd consider a professional duty to inform you that, you know, this is what the threshold is. We need, you know, you need, we need to have deep conversion to it and, and if we want it to succeed. And, and, and by educating, you can, you know, by providing that background, we can, you can decide if you are or if you're not. You know, either alternative, but I think the education helps clarify that for you.
So two, two things. Did you have plans to put this online, just this draft as we have it?
It's on the public, on our agenda for tonight, online.
Okay.
We can put it on, you know, another page if needed.
Well, here's my thought. Like, let's say you have a public hearing and, and you present this at the public hearing. It's 140 pages long.
Yeah.
You know, that, that's obviously not enough time to, for those who care to ingest the details of this, right? So it seems like you'd need to have some time where it's baking on the website. People can go read it and, and nobody's going to read this in a night. Well, there are some lunatics in town, but you know what I mean? Like that's.
Non-staff.
The average person is going to take, I, we took 10 hours plus into this or more, probably maybe 20 dozens of hours.
I was going to say 10, 10 times. My brain is, is registered.
Right. I think, I feel like this needs to be presented out there.
Been talking about it since 2003.
Where it's accessible and, you know, not necessarily in, in this meeting, but maybe on the website. Like, hey, proposal for a new zone, that would be my.
I think that's an excellent point. I think that if we had a long, you know, a long-term link on the homepage of the website. This, I mean, this is a big deal. This is changing the fundamental character of the downtown were it to be adopted. And so, you know, we need to do our duty to inform citizens of that.
And about that fundamental change, well, let me preface that by saying I support this. All that I've reviewed of it, I, I like this idea. I think this is great for the city. However, Washington Boulevard is seen as two things, right? It's, it's our downtown. It's also seen by I think half, some of the town at least, as a highway, a way to get quickly to downtown Ogden, right? So when you talk about walkability and highway, those two things are kind of mutually exclusive at times. So I think we need to decide, is this going to be a walkable downtown or is this going to be a highway? Or is there some hybrid of both? But do you know what I mean? When you're trying to push people to the street and you have a 50 mile an hour speed limit, that's, that's been a concern of mine all along here, that Washington is seen as a travel corridor and it's our downtown. So just a thought. That said, I support it, but I see that concern.
Uh, just to follow up on that comment. When you make a decision about the form-based code in order for it to succeed as part of that threshold comment that I made earlier, you really have to be making a decision about the nature and character of Washington Boulevard. And, you know, and that's, needs to be defined in detail. Rob's talked about, you know, the streetscape plan, but you're making a decision for the future of Washington Boulevard. That doesn't mean that it can't have, you know, decent level of service with regards to automobiles. But it, it would be naive to adopt the form-based code and leave Washington Boulevard as, as exactly as is. There's, there are changes that will need to be made. There's, you know, the staff has a draft of a complete streets program. And we need to tie in three different things, the, the work that Rob and the interns are doing on the streetscape, the form-based code and the complete streets and, and merge them all together. But you, you, you can't just, what you're really trying to get is a public realm, which is from the front of the building to the other front of the building on the other side and everything in between, which includes the sidewalk, the street, the park strip, the street trees, the light poles, the, and then the traffic lanes. And you need to gate, make that as pleasing an environment as, as reasonable and possible for pedestrians if you want them to stop and spend time in the environment. If they feel threatened in any way, you know, by the automobiles, then they're not going to stick around. So, Councilman Swanson, did you have a comment?
I've got two questions. One is if we hold, like you have under option, be a joint public hearing with city council and planning commission, does that satisfy the requirement for two public hearings? Because it's really only one public hearing held with two bodies.
It can.
So it's a public hearing before both bodies? So if both bodies are there, then you should be good. As long as it's a scheduled meeting for that group.
Along with that, I think, from my perspective, I don't think, from my perspective, I'd like to see a pretty intensive open house that precedes the public hearing. You know, there's, obviously we're, there will be other informational campaign going on to get word out and encourage people to take a look at what the, these big changes would be. But as we've done with other changes that we've done in the city, I think we need to have a, a serious open house. And like we did with Village of Prominence Point and some of the other larger projects that we've had, that we need to have that open house and give people an opportunity to come, ask questions, be educated a little bit, and then make comment.
I think that's a good idea.
I think, I think that'll be, that open house is going to, for those who attend, I think the way this is presented, it sells itself pretty well because there, it's visual. And the, and the renderings in here are, are nice. People are going to see that and by and large like it. I hope that the code really represents, you know, what, what comes out of it. Because, you know, when you look at these pictures, they're, they're beautiful and even the drawings and stuff. I think that, I think it sells itself well. I don't know if that's the most fair way to present it, you know? But a marketing guy would like it.
Yeah. I, I think that, you know, a combination of the, some of the photos and the diagrams, but also an overview of the principles of the code is, is where I would, is a significant amount of the content that I would include. So that people know what they're getting, again, going back to.
See, I don't know how you convey that point, but hey, you're going to get a beautiful downtown. You're also going to have to go 35 miles an hour to get to 12th Street, right? Like, that's the, I, I just keep going back to that. I remember being, this is 15, 20 years ago and talking to, I grew up in North Ogden. Talking to a buddy who'd moved down south somewhere and he said, you know what? We would have loved to move back to North Ogden, but this was before we had that freeway access coming out here. But, you know, he said, I would have loved to move back to North Ogden, but it just takes so long to get anywhere there. And, you know, I'd have to get out to, so I think there's a cost to this.
That, that's true. The, the, just to play devil's advocate, the, the flip side of that is that instead of taking a long time to get somewhere, we turn North Ogden into somewhere, so to speak.
Absolutely.
Don't mean that, that it's not already.
I'm in favor, but.
You know, so that people don't have, we, we want to prioritize for the automobiles that want to come to North Ogden, not the automobiles that want to leave.
Right.
I mean, if, if you decide on this policy.
This has significant impact in the future on, and I, I think that's almost inevitable, but on Monroe Boulevard and, and those north-south access points. This, this changes Washington Boulevard from a highway to a downtown, which I think is good, but it does change it.
The other question that I had refers to the Washington being a UDOT road. Complete streets, changing the speed limits, all of that is going to have to go through UDOT. Right? We, I mean, to change this, this northern section of Washington down to 40 miles an hour, which we did here recently, that took UDOT sign-off to happen. And so if we're looking at changing the road structure or speed limits, they're going to have to be involved in. I don't know how.
So what I understand that is most likely to get them to the table to work with us on that issue is that we have to have a policy in place regarding our streets that identifies what we want for them. They can, when we have a policy in place that's been, you know, adopted ordinance, then they, they have to come to the table and work with us. As long as we don't have a policy on that topic on the books for, specifically for Washington Boulevard, then they're not bound to, to sit down at the table and, and agree to things. And not that they would, we would get everything that we wanted if they did, but that puts us in a much better position. And I've, I've talked to, I think it's been twice I've talked to a, a UDOT employee on that topic. And so to address that, something, the complete streets policy would be our, our strongest bargaining chip there is getting that adopted in order to have a conversation with them.
So, okay, this, and then I'll shut up, I promise. Okay. Just to give the council a visual of how I see, as we've gone through this for weeks and weeks, I picture what we're trying to do here with this code to make a, a more modern-looking version of Logan, Utah, right? Where, where you've got shops and stuff and, and you've got a main highway, right? Which was downtown Logan. And then you've got shops and pedestrians along there. Now Logan has a rustic, older charm to it, right? But this would be more modern-looking buildings, but with that same proximity of pedestrians to automobiles, to stores. And that, so if you're just in your minds, when you're looking at 140 pages, I, I think that's what the end product will result in, a more modern-looking version of that corridor in downtown Logan.
I wasn't, sorry, I was trying not to cough and everything.
Oh, okay. Oh, you didn't have anything to say? I was so curious.
Follow-up comment to Councilman Swanson's point about UDOT. We, we thought a pretty solid amount about that issue and we've tried to make some, add some policy, some provisions in the code that minimize the effect of Washington, of UDOT's control. For instance, there's an existing corridor agreement that specifies roughly where commercial accesses can go. You know, again, the, the core of the form-based code, the core principle is walkability. And so because we don't at this point in time have complete control over the block length, which is one of the key principles of walkability, we, we've put into the code something that would sort of be a substitute for a block length or like a, a street intercepting, you know, the side streets coming off of, of Washington. And that is what we're calling promenades. They'd be 25, 20 or 25 feet. They'd have requirements for different pavers and they would be a space between the building that would allow pedestrians to walk out onto the front. Because as we went through the planning commission, you know, this, it became clear that Washington Boulevard, as the code was conceived, is, is the primary corridor that it's being contemplated for. And so we're trying to do as many things that are in the code that address that issue of walkability that are independent of UDOT's control as possible. They're, I'm going to be honest, they're not perfect. You know, block length is the best thing that you can do to increase walkability, keeping it at a certain maximum. And we don't have complete control over that on Washington, in this point of view. But we, but there's, there's another code in Saratoga Springs that wasn't adopted. And this, these promenades were both considered in, in that document and the, the template code that we got. And so this is not a, it's, to me, it can be actually a really innovative idea, a substitute for ending a block is, you know, providing a pedestrian thoroughfare through a block in the right context and with the right, you know, caveats. But it's, you know, it's a little bit different of a solution, given the situation.
I would say maybe in sequence, maybe recommend D. Because I think the city council needs to be, needs to wear of what some of the, some of what you recommended. And then B C, you know, public hearing with the city council, planning commission, and then open house. So D, B C.
In that order, you're saying?
I kind of like the open house before the public hearing. Only because people, it could be explained. Because the, the words form-based code don't mean anything to anybody unless they have any idea what we're talking about. And so to go there and sort of have a little education and ask questions before you go to a public hearing and say whether you're for or against, I think is actually a really good idea to do it in that order.
I think what Blake is trying to say, at least what I heard was, as a council, I mean, I, I know what form-based code is. I haven't read through all 140 pages yet.
I agree, the first step.
And I think we need to be brought up to speed as much as we can. And then we have a joint session that begins with an open house and then ends with the public hearing. Is what I'm understanding.
I agree.
And I just encourage the council, it's 140 pages, but there's actually some pictures. I'm just saying, you, I, I actually think, Brandon, I think you can get through it in an evening. I really do. Maybe not understand.
Yeah, it says run dick run.
It's 140 pages, but it really isn't. I read specs all the time.
As you go through it, you've got to keep in mind where, where you envision this happening, you know? And then we've, we've mapped it out as all of Washington Boulevard. But at the end of the day, you know, you start looking at it and saying, you know, how walkable is it between, you know, I don't know, 20, 200 north to 24? You know, there's a couple blocks between, you know, the King's area, that being a very walkable and developable area. And then it kind of narrows down to what's available, which is just along Washington. And as we come back out north here, it opens back up to, and, and so there's going to be a little bit of both because people aren't going to be shopping here at Smith's and walk down to King's. You know, hey, this is a walkable neighborhood, you know? There's, so it's that, there may be a section in the middle that is a little bit unique in saying, hey, we can't expect this to all be non-vehicle. You know, the vehicles are important to be able to access it because in reality, you know, people are going to drive.
Now Commissioner Thomas has a bigger idea of a driverless shuttle going between the two. We've talked about that offline, but.
Yes. As Clay mentioned, they have these driverless cars packed as trolleys. And they just tool around these little downtowns and get people rides back and forth there in little hot spots.
George Jetson, it's awesome.
Brandon, if we do this, will we get Blue Bear Diner down here?
You can go talk to the family.
So if I could clarify one thing, Commissioner Nancaro, was your suggestion to do the council review sessions, then the open house and then the public, or yeah, then the joint public hearing, is that?
Exactly what, what Councilman Severance said, except the open house before the joint public hearing, maybe it would be a good.
That'd be a good order.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Are there, it sounds like a good overview of the general process. Are there other comments that you want to add to that or?
It's, it's, I've said from the get-go, it's a lot to bite off. And it's going to be a challenge to present all this in an open house. I mean, I'm sure you can do it. I saw you do it with the master plan and that was, and that was great. But, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be a challenge, I think, to create that open house.
Okay.
Or you guys are, you're professionals at this, so I have confidence in you on that.
On the topic of the review sessions, we started kind of with, for, I don't remember why, but we started, I think, with parking and a couple of others. Probably what I would suggest with the, with the review sessions is that we cover, we go in the opposite. Or actually, we're going to, I think it'd be best we work from the big picture to the small picture. Because, you know, that, the big picture is going to be where you're going to need to decide whether there's buy-in on the part of the council to this. And I, and for the record, I don't take that as a foregone conclusion. I'm not an unmitigated, an advocate of unmitigate, unmitigated advocate of, or unreserved advocate of, of form-based code. I want to make sure that this fits the personality of North Ogden City. So, you know, but I, so I think dealing with maybe the first four or five chapters will be the most important. And then in addition to that, the parking will be, will want to talk about that. Because there's another issue on form-based code, which is everybody wants to make sure that, that you're able to park, right? And, and that's totally respectable consideration. But just numerically and spatially, every time you add a requirement for parking, you're decreasing the walkability of the. you're decreasing the walkability of the environment, because you're increasing the space between buildings, right? So, it's, it's a catch-22. If you're concerned about, you know, overly concerned about parking, you're eating up the ability of people to then, to create an environment that has enough units in a certain area to be able to make it so that people can walk and meet their daily needs for those who actually reside in the area to, to survive without two cars or, or even one car. And so, you know, if you, if you excessively increase the parking requirements, then you're diminishing your ability to, to deliver on one of the fundamental promises of the form-based code, and, and it's important to mention that to you, so.
So, Brandon, just a, a suggestion for, when you come to council, if you're, like next week, if you were gonna come to the council, it'd be nice if you gave us a heads up, hey, these are the chapters that, like school, you know, you gotta read these a couple chapters before, so at least we, we're not blindsided or something, you know? I mean, that'd be nice if we could.
Yeah, so we'll.
Have a little bit of idea, and give some of your slow readers, even the slow picture lookers. And so, hopefully you can give us a, maybe a week's.
Says the one who said a hundred and forty pages. Won't be bad.
Yeah, so.
What I'm gonna suggest is that we'll work with the mayor and with John to put together a schedule for you, and then share that with you, and then we'll move in that direction.
Be awesome.
Brandon, just out of curiosity, did you make any, I remember in the last planning commission, I brought up a point about load on load zones. Did you made, make any combinations or any?
Not on that topic. I, I did make a number of edits that I finally got to from.
When we get into the details, I have comments and thoughts about that.
Okay. I guess that brings up another point. It might be helpful to have a planning commission member at the city council review sessions to provide where the planning commission ended up on certain chapters or issues. So, that might be something we wanna consider as well. Because, you know, so.
Can we keep those separate from amphitheater discussions? Nine PM, nine, ten o'clock at night?
Then let's move it along.
Thanks, Brandon. Thank you.
Next item?
Mayor and council members, planning commissioners, the next discussion is that we have a application for another master plan community project. This one is located on Second East and twenty-five fifty North. And we have some things right there that we put out on the table. I sent out a number of. I think you just gotta put that in the middle. Some of the time, we have some illustrations of building elevations for this project as well. So, the Double Lot Ranch is the property that we're talking about. And just by way of orientation, I don't know that, hell, it's to the west of what's known as the ranches, and also the Montessori School is in that general location as well.
Talking to Shooting Star Ranch.
Well, I don't know about that, but I call it the Double Lot Ranch, because that's what they've called it, so. Okay, thank you.
Those of us that have been here since the cherry trees were planted, it's called the Shooting Star Ranch.
I've been his neighbor for forty years.
In any case. The aerial photo that you see there doesn't encompass all of the property, but the diagram that you see on the table, both of those do. So, the project called the ranches is identified on this particular aerial, and John will, oh, yeah, pull it down, so then we can see a little better. So, where the cursor is, right in there, that's the ranches project. And this project is going to be a mixed-use project. It is going to be built in multiple phases, and it's going to have a common, the initial phases will be along the lines of the extension of the ranches project with a commercial component that will come about in the future up along the north boundary there, which is twenty-five fifty North. And I'll also talk a little bit about, you'll see, in the, in the center there, there's some property that the city is looking at developing as well as a combination detention basin recreational facility as well. So, let me.
Where's, where's our city, isn't our city property just in a little bit to the, in the, you see the pool?
So, the city property is the buildings that are on the left-hand side, or this, that's this boundary.
That's Harrisville right there, right?
Yeah. So, this is the, the edge of the city. And the Montessori School is the white building.
Okay, so let me give a, a brief overview relative to how these types of projects have generally transformed or is by way of process. The city council recognized that there was a need for the ability to identify a process as well as standards for high-quality development in our, in and around our downtown. And as a part of that, the master plan community zone was established and a provision established within our general plan to allow for those types of projects as well. So, in the middle of, of page two, it gives the purpose of MPCs. An integral part of this zone is a multi-step review process to assure compatibility of proposed land uses with existing and proposed adjacent neighborhoods, as well as a vision of the general plan. The desired goal is to move toward a vibrant, sustainable, and walkable neighborhood centers with integrated streets. Proposed plans for development must follow or exceed design standards found within this ordinance. Specific plans shall be a reflection of a required development agreement. So, that is, the, the beauty of this is that there's an opportunity to gain a real comfort level on the part of both the planning commission and the city council relative to whether or not a project is going to be in line with those specific standards and goals that I just identified. So, this is the first time for the, these two groups to, the planning commission and council, to take a look at this project. I'm still gonna call it the Double Lot Ranch, because that's what it's called in the application. Proposal is for, again, mixed-use residential and commercial in multiple phases. The initial project will be neighboring ranches project. The master plan community zone has a range of six to eighteen units per acre. The applicant would like to have a, a density in the neighborhood of twelve units per acre. The ranches project, as an example, is about nine units per acre. So, within the range. The concept plan has thirty-five buildings with, depending, three to six units per building, depending on the location. Amenities are yet to be determined as part of the overall design. Next, I wanna talk a little bit about the recreational feature that includes parking, a, a joint project, partnership with Pine View that will allow for them to have a area for their secondary water system. It will allow for additional capacity to provide for a recreational amenity, potentially a fishing pond or other type of thing that goes along with it. John can, I haven't been in all of these meetings. Are there other amenities, John?
So, the, the fishing pond is not feasible, in the sense that it would have to be too deep and too expensive. And so, right now, the, the lighter blue would be a, like a beach area. The darker blue would be the, the Pine View storage area. And the idea is that Pine View would turn water out of the canal every night to fill up their basin after they empty it for the pump line that they're installing. And so, the water will turn over about a third of the water every day. And so, it'll come in on this edge, fill up this area, and then spill over into the deeper area, and then go out that end with the pump station. So, that's the, that's the plan for the project. And it's, we've been awarded a, a federal grant for this project, because it's a joint project that'll cover the majority of the cost, including Pine View's portion, but there'll still be some cost to our stormwater fund and our recreation funds, either through impact fees. Yes, and then the, the top five in, feet, so it's hard to see, but these are, are steeped edges. So, the, the detention basin that's on twenty-five fifty between twenty-seven hundred and, I'll just bring up the map. So, the detention basin that's right here, so Walgreens is here. The detention basin here will be moved here and put on top of this facility. So, there will be capacity for storm flows during a storm event. And then, it would, it would, yeah, handle the water just like the basin does now, except there'll be another facility underneath it, for lack of a better word, so.
When you say it'll be part recreation, does that mean the public will be able to paddleboard, kayak out on the water and stuff like that?
That's the, yeah, that's the plan, is to allow for swimming and paddleboarding, paddle boarding and kayaking, stuff like that.
So, you talked about those steep banks, how, how, steep are we talking? Is that a drop of what down to the water?
Uh, so it'll be a, I don't have the exact number here. I don't, I don't know the slope for sure. I wanna say it's a two to one.
It just doesn't seem very.
But the, the beach section is much more shallow. So, I'm not, I, I can't put a scale to it, but it looks like it's a two to one, so not a forty-five degree angle, but closer to maybe a twenty-five.
So, when I walk up to this, I see, I mean, what, like, just one big pond, obviously? And, and the beach section is a foot deep or so?
So, each of these lines is a foot. So, in the middle, it's about four feet deep on a typical day, and then the, the shoreline's here. There's also a wall here that's set to keep that level of the water, so that when it fills up, it spills over into the deeper area. And then, they'll be on, around the whole ridge, this tan area is planned to be a walking path, so people can go around the facility, you know, if they were just walking.
Is there ever a situation when the, the beach area is, or the, the main area is much lower than the beach area? So, you get in your kayak and you go over this, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm in favor.
So, this, the, all this, all the design features for the wall haven't been, been, been put in yet. We're trying to make sure there's ways to discourage people from walking along the top of the wall, things like that. But the, 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 the design is that this will hold water at a higher level than this area. But to what extent, I don't, we don't know yet, cause it'll depend on how often Pine View's pumping out.
So, the dark, the dark blue is the area that will fluctuate under pump?
Right, and then, but.
The light blue will kinda make, be maintained?
Yeah. We, there will be a bypass here where it can go directly into the pond, so that if we ever wanna drain this to clean it, we can do that as well, so.
Or over, overfill for rainfall?
Yeah, and so, the, the top of the line will be all the way up here, so there's another five feet on top of the, the blue outline that's storm water capacity.
So, the reasons this isn't a traditional pond, it just is, was mainly cost?
Uh, you, in order for the.
Is it physically possible to dig something deep enough to just have a fishing pond?
So, you could dig something deep enough. In fact, the, the pond right here holds bass. But the vegetation and the depth for the, I, I think the trout that they, that the DNR had talked to us about putting in, it, it wouldn't be deep enough, and the vegetation growth would make the water too gross. And so, there, there'll be shore treatments to discourage vegetation growth, which means that, that the fish can't survive. But they've talked about doing, maybe an event in the spring where we actually put some, some fish in, and people can, can come fish it out, and then we get rid of the, the rest, once the event's over.
So, this particular aspect of that is not part of their application, only in the sense that it occupies the center portion of the property that it's being talked about. And the other aspect of this is that it gives an opportunity for the detention basin, the existing one, along twenty-six hundred, to be converted into commercial, as a, to commercial development. So, it's going to provide additional tax base for the city. So, it's a kind of a quid pro quo. Ends up being an opportunity for the city to have additional commercial tax base, and at the same time, provide for a very specific set of needs here that relate to storm drainage, and also for secondary water system, and provide for an amenity. So, it's a, sort of a, an interesting concept to be able to pull all those things together, yes.
So, Rob, what, what's this zone at right now? Secondly, how much property are they wanting to change to the zone? It's not the entire chunk of property, is it?
It's just under forty acres, and it's RE twenty, and so it would go to this MPC zone. So, it would identify in, as part of the development agreement, the specifics as far as these initial phases, the, probably a little more detail with concepts for the remainder parcels that would be along the lines of mixed use with that occurring along twenty-five fifty North.
Straight east of that is, what is it, is all?
Straight east of that is.
That's the ranches.
R four?
R four.
R four, yes. I'm trying to remember if the, the school is zoned R four or not, but it may be. But the ranches is for sure, it's zoned R four.
So, to me, that, that MPC zone fits kinda that ranches area, more than RE twenty.
Rob, you said the density range in MPC was six to eighteen?
It is, as it relates to, it relates to our, in our, the MPC, it, it relates back to the general plan.
Right.
The general plan for this area calls for medium density, and that's the range that's identified as the six to eighteen. Along Washington Boulevard, it, the range is all the way up to forty units per acre, because of the differentiation there. So, that's the reason why.
I can't get past the pond of pain. It's just like, I, I can't imagine this wall and the horror of going over it in a kayak when you're like six years old.
The, the intent is that the water levels will typically be within about a foot of each other. I mean, it's, I, I'm, yeah.
Don't answer that, right? Okay, that's just a rhetorical question.
So, there will be a site plan review that you will get to answer that direct question.
Well, there's where my thinking is right now. If you're gonna make a pond, make a pond.
There we go.
What is this? And I'm all for making a pond.
So. I didn't mean to get us off on too much of a diversion there, but it is a nice amenity to have as a central focal point for a fairly dense part of our community.
I work with a guy who had, has a family of four kids, and he lived in West Haven, in a bigger home. Big, and they decided they wanted to downsize, and they just bought in this area, maybe a block west of there. One of these townhomes, the, the townhomes to the block west. And one of his, one of the reasons he did that was he had heard rumors that a maverick was coming and that a pond was coming. So, now whether there, whether there's any truth to that, right? But it's a feature, right? I mean, I, I understand it's a great amenity, but it's like the design of this one.
So, have the developers talked about this being a, what type of, is it like a fifty-five mill third?
Well, they're here, John and, and they're gonna have an opportunity. I'm just gonna give you a quick overview, and then feel free to answer them questions. Let me just mention a couple other component parts of master plan community zone. We have quite a number of standards that are a part of that zone. And if there are standards that they believe they can provide a higher set of designs that don't necessarily specifically meet those standards, then they can request a waiver that can be incorporated into the development agreement and that addresses those specific things. So, stucco was one of them. I mean, you know, building materials was definitely a definite part of the, one of those. But it goes, building materials, elevations. But it goes, building materials, uh, elevations, um, parking. Um, we're going to plan for, one of the big parts of this is that, uh, isn't it, uh, one fifty east is, uh, goes, cuts through the middle of this project. So we have a collector's street that's going through there, so being able to make sure that we, uh, appropriately address how that street is going to not divide the neighborhood and how it'll still provide for, uh, traffic flows is going to be an integral part of this design, so that's an important part of it. Um, I already talked, I already mentioned about the general plan, uh, I've listed a number of questions for you to consider tonight. The, the basic thing for the purpose of this discussion is what are the things that you want the developer to address? What are those key things that you would like to see them to incorporate into their design? They're here to share with you their vision, is the proposal consistent with the general plan? Does the proposal meet the North Ogden ordinances? Is the MPC request appropriate for this neighborhood? Does the application meet the purpose and intent of the MPC zone? Are there any standards that should be included in the development agreement? So that's, that's the purpose of this, I'm gonna turn it over to John, he can share with you some of the elevations that they've done. John, I think we do have some elevations that were sent out to you, so we can show those. And then we have some colored renderings that we can pass around and, uh, we'll turn it over to you two and you can kinda share your vision as to, do you want, uh?
You want this light on or off? Is that okay? Still see it?
All right, well, the history of this is that, uh, uh, we purchased initially, uh, I believe there were fifteen acres and we sold some off to the Maizery School. And then they were left with about nine acres that my partner here, Ken Crockett, we envisioned putting in, uh, very nice and they're there, you can go look at them, townhomes that we would rent. Now, uh, the property that's under consideration, when we talked to the owner, Orluf, you know, and he presented this concept. He was a little reluctant to have that all jammed with apartments in the back and go up to, I think Rob said, eighteen units per acre. And so he wanted to make it, uh, to transition into these, these townhomes we built, then to the front to go to the commercial. And I think that's a real credit to Orluf, that he's, he's concerned about what he lives in the community. And so, uh, this colored rendering you look at is, uh, what, uh, Crockett and Coler built there going into the fairgrounds. And that was, that may be a, a finished product besides the one we have almost finished to drive through to take a look at the quality of, of what's happening there. The ranch's phase one does have a clubhouse, uh, against my wishes, but my partners thought there ought to be a clubhouse.
Yep.
So we went with what the professionals say. The renting of these, uh, there, we seem to have hit a good part of the market. The people are coming in and signing one-year leases, they have families, some of them are older. There seems to be a trend that, uh, people just don't wanna monkey with yards anymore and they just wanna go home and watch the NBA or whatever you watch, and then they wanna go somewhere and lock it up. So, uh, we will have completed seventy-nine units in phase one, we've already started on the second phase. And then in, uh, on the Orluf piece, our double lot, as Rob said, we're approximately a hundred and fifty-two units there. The yield isn't very good because we have major roads, uh, connecting Harrisville, that goes along your pond and then going, uh, north and south up to twenty-five fifty, and those are big collector roads. And then the road from our ranches would extend over to your pond, which we made sixty-six feet at the city's request to go into the pond. So we think as far as Rob, the accessibility for people to get in there is terrific. Orluf has talked to Ken and I about, rather than, uh, stopping that road at the pond, Orluf has talked about, uh, putting, uh, putting asphalt and going right out to twenty-five fifty now. And that's quite a sacrifice, 'cause that splits his remaining property with the road, a public road to go through there. John would have to do the paperwork on that, you know, to, you know, how that's gonna happen, they're gonna tweak where it's gonna go. So I think as far as the city's concerned, it's a home run, you're getting a great product, there's no stucco, it's all hardy board.
All right, enough with the stucco. I don't know.
I, I would invite you guys to go out and take a look at what we did up by the fairgrounds.
I've been out there.
Nice community, it's got walking trails, dog parks. Already going to the north entrance to the fairgrounds.
Okay, so it's just to the right and then the fields are over here and the big spots behind it.
Behind the animal shelter area?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Those are nice.
Real similar product, we changed the interior on what we're doing here, we went with all hardy board and all stucco.
When, when was that built?
We just finished.
So I would, would there be a management company taking care of this, over time it doesn't deteriorate? 'Cause a lot of times renters come in for a year, they don't worry about how well it looks, what is kept up, and so things start to look beat down.
We're not gonna sell these, we're gonna keep them, we want it to look nice.
Okay.
We have a management company that takes care of them all. The one we started up at the fairgrounds, we initially started it about four years ago and, like I say, I invite you to go through. We just finished the third phase of it, it was done in three phases, about fifty-one, thirty phases, really similar to what we had envisioned. And that's a nice community, you know, when you go there, you'll see the people out walking, you'll see them out, just like a normal community. It's not your typical apartment community. We, we started this vision that we had with townhomes, uh, six, eight years ago, rather than just doing a three-story, you know, typical apartment com- complex. My partner and I felt like this vision worked really well, makes it more of a community. And I, I honestly, we have probably seventy-five percent of the people renew their leases.
So it's more of an upscale type, too?
Our, our average.
It's more than my house.
We have indoor one bedroom, which is like eight hundred and fifty square feet all in one lot, to a three-bedroom in there.
And everybody gets at least one room.
The one bedrooms only have thirty-five ridges. They all have driveways. I really, I really like the product, I, I think it's great for apartment-style living. Like I say, I invite you to go out and see what you think, I mean, 'cause we feel like it's a really good product.
So that pond in the middle or not the, you know, but.
Keep going, keep going.
Is that, would that only be accessible if you were a tenant?
No, it would.
So I don't understand that, 'cause usually if, you know, you live in.
What, what the deal is, is the way the city designed, had us design this originally, was it's city streets that run through our apartment complexes. We've connected them with walking paths and all that, and we're trying to create a community within the city streets. So everybody feels like they're part of the community rather than an apartment complex all by themselves. And I mean, we're putting big, nice sixty-six foot roads in there, I mean, there's, there's a lot.
And, and then your community center or your rec center, whatever, is that also, maybe if you pay a fee, you could use it if you don't live there?
We haven't done that yet, but we, we've supplied it for the residents that live there, we put a gym in there and. We haven't really designed the amenities.
I would add something, uh, with the other one, MPC zone that we're doing. I, uh, there's a good chunk of my life that I wish I had back where we talked about nothing but parky. We talked a lot about parky, uh, just be aware.
Well, we'd do the same as we did in phase one, Rob, with.
With, with the ranches.
Yeah, with the ranches.
Yeah, I think we got there, but I was thinking about the other one, Country Boy. We, we went around and around and around and around on that one, the parking.
You referred to as a jungle.
We really feel like this is a great product.
So how many total units would there be?
Two to a hundred and fifty-five, depending on, uh, how, how we get it arranged.
There's fifteen acres there, so, you know, we're, we're shooting for ten to twelve acres in that area.
And that's that section that's down below, the retention pond, Pine View pond thing?
It hooks into our ranches here.
Right, it's that.
And then it ends right there.
Okay, so it does wrap around.
Yeah, but it doesn't go quite to the pond.
How much ground are you proposing to be commercial?
Fifteen acres.
That's gonna be Orluf's call, but that would be, you know, here's his, here's our barns, that'd be up there. We're only purchasing the bottom portion.
So that would be the residential commercial up top?
Yeah.
So given, I promise I talk about the pond anymore, but, okay, given that it's the, a big draw to your renting, I mean, you guys, are you comfortable with the design of that, or?
Well, it would be better if there were fish in it.
I agree with you. I agree with you. I mean, what, with the, okay, would you recommend changes to that?
I don't think so. I think.
Do you, do you feel like a pond bisected by a cement wall?
I don't know.
Is a, is a draw to your, I mean, you, you have a vested interest in your business here.
About the wall and the paddleboard over the top.
But what, what, this pond is integral to your marketing of, of your product here, right?
We already had one person from Far West move up here, you see?
Yeah, you know, I, I, I didn't, I don't personally, he, I, when I started on the planning commission, I didn't think anybody liked this type of living. And I've, I've had a change of heart because people approach me and they talk about it. Um, hey, I hear you're on the planning commission, we're talking, man, we wanna downsize and buy something like this. And I've, I've totally had my eyes open that, that this is a marketable thing, so. Fine, I'm, I'm asking specifically about this amenity and its draw.
I have one couple that sit down, I approach every day, he's ninety-three and she's ninety-one, they love it.
Okay.
And they'll go with it.
I have everybody from that age down to.
Sure.
But I believe this amenity is not their project.
No, it's not our project.
This is a city project.
It neighbors it, and I'd like your input on it.
Neighbors will use it.
And I know you guys seem reluctant to give me that, so I'll let you off the hook.
In conjunction with the city, building the roads so that people in the city have access to, you know, connect you to, to the neighboring city, both to the west and to the south. 'Cause right now, there's no way to get out of those neighborhoods. The people that live to the east of our development, the only way they have ever had to get out of theirs was out there by talk, you know, by, uh, out on Washington, now they can come to ours up there and then there'll be several other.
Then go south and then they can go.
Other a- accesses for them to get out of the neighborhood.
So you choose not to comment on the design of the pond?
I, I haven't seen a finished design of it yet, so I don't know.
Okay.
I like the concept of it.
I like the concept of it, too.
Let it go, let it go in the.
Is there anything, any, um, agreements that you have with any of your other developments and stuff that discourage or hamper, um, like those VRBOs or Airbnb's or something like that, 'cause I could see a development like this, um, you know, people maybe lease it for a year, but they're doing it so that they can have other, you know, vacation people come in and it happens to St. George all the time and stuff, I mean, is that? Do you know if that?
We, we don't allow subletting at all.
Okay, all right.
Have to be your primary residence.
I, I will say, I've, I've been to this, uh, Mountain View project and I've toured units even, walked through it, and it is a really nice project, it's done a good job.
John, do you guys have any idea what the north, uh, commercial area is gonna look like? How many units, etc., will be?
I don't know, I think the market will have to dictate that. I think when you get your retention basin sold on the north, you know, that commercial will begin to go west. You know, Barker first needs, S F has to happen, then you got Dave Howell, then you have the city. So I think the mayors are looking at that whole area to go, hopefully it'll jump across the street. And then there'll be a collector for Mr. Barker and his fire trucks to go through Corky's property. There'll be an extension of this one to twenty-seven hundred, is that correct?
Yep.
That's on the plan. So it'll, that'll really open things up from two thousand, well, from Prominence Point, really, clear up to twenty-seven hundred. Maybe another north-south road.
So one of the things that we'll be working on is, we have, in essence, a phase that they are working towards. And then the northern, uh, property is more of a concept at this point, so we'll have to craft it this, in the development agreement, how we're gonna treat that for future reviews, et cetera, and certainly doable. Arthur, I, I've got a pretty good list here of some things that you all have mentioned, if you got any that you wanna make sure that we, uh, address and treat as part of this, uh, review.
Do you have any notes on the pond?
I don't.
I think it's part of the MPC, it's critical that we identify what, you know, changing this to a mixed-use zone or a master plan zone. We're being proposed that there's commercial property, so we need to identify at least a minimum that's gonna stay that. Obviously, they're not in control of the north property, but as part of this, if we're rezoning that whole area under that premise, then we need to at least identify a minimum that's gonna stay commercial and not just be like, oh, we couldn't get another maverick to come, so we wanna put another apartment building up.
So MPC requires a minimum of five percent, that's what's in the standard, so you can specify a higher percentage if you want.
Okay.
So that, that would be two acres, I mean, five percent would be two acres, right?
On twenty-five fifty?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, just so.
Yes.
We hope there'd be more.
He doesn't have surprise or something?
Well, and hopefully we'll end up at some point in time where we're gonna have an up and down commercial with residential in the same building, so. That's certainly a, a possibility.
One thing I've always been calling, I've worked with Mayor Taylor, Taylor, why can't we get businesses, why can't we get restaurants? You have to have the people, and these developments like Prominence Point or what we're doing brings in the people. And then these, uh, national chains or even our local chains, they wanna come north. It's been very difficult to get, to get people out here. When I did, uh, Cafe Rio, that was a hard sale to get them to go, and I wanted them to take more. And they only took twenty-seven hundred square feet, and now I think they would've said they'd done more. They don't, they didn't believe the people out here would support them. That's the, if there are more people, your commercial will follow.
You, you know, what I, what I've found so far, we're, we're just in our first phase, we're just finishing it up. I've been doing multifamily for twenty-plus years. I honestly, I haven't had a complex rent up as fast as this one. I'm completely leased up and I've got two buildings left to finish, people are waiting to move in. So obviously, there's a demand for, I was kinda shocked at the demand, I didn't know that it would be that well. It's, it, it has went and leased up faster than the one we did at Mountain View. And not when I have a hundred and forty-five units and it's one hundred percent full, so. I'm, I'm totally, I would have been shocked if.
You're talking about the one called the ranches?
Yes, I mean, it, it has been phenomenal with the, the success we have with it so far, so just, just letting you know that.
Not to beat a dead horse, but the, the wall between the beach and the deeper part, can we have no stucco on that wall? Hey, that wall's gonna be stucco between the.
So, I mean, if you just look at an aerial here, I don't have, I don't have a recommendation, just a comment, it's just, it just does make a sea of of de- development of this type of homes from Washington for nearly a mile to the west. It's just an unbroken bunch of houses, right, and there's, I don't, I don't have anything better based on the, that's her, well, it doesn't matter, the terrace bill, it's still, there's still structures there, right, so it does, it does create that. So in other words, we're gonna have a big corridor of, of homes, and I'm, I commend you guys for the quality here, for sure, 'cause that does help, for sure.
I would like to pick a little beef with the city. When I did the development off two hundred, two thousand, you made me do an eighty-foot road. Now you've abandoned that. Sixty, I'm just teasing, so as you come north, you start with eighty, then you go down to your.
With this double lot, can you change the width road?
No, no.
I mean, that, that would be the one consideration here, right? Is there, is, is, is it? I know it's on the master plan to be, I get all that, but it does make a bunch of houses in a row.
It feels congested.
It does, well, yeah, if you were trying to get from one side of, like, if you were trying to get over here from Taco Time area to Majestic Elementary by not going on twenty-five fifty, you're gonna be driving for twenty minutes in these little neighborhoods, right? And that's, that's the reality, I don't have a better solution, I'm just pointing that out. Just being the realist here.
So one of the things that I, we were talking about Washington Boulevard earlier, but, you know, when we start looking at these collector streets and what have you, one of the things that they have the ability to do, sometimes we think of streets as just asphalt and wow, well, how are we gonna transition away from that? Well, you know, you can come up with a nice streetscape design and what have you that actually complements the fact that even though you're gonna have a fair amount of traffic there, that it actually becomes an amenity to the folks that are gonna be living there. That's what they want, they don't, if they end up with something that is just a very heavily-traveled way, that's gonna be a negative to their project, they don't want that. And certainly, the city would want to see something that has uh more of a boulevard feel to it, is what I'm trying to say.
If I were to show my in-laws in Henderson, Nevada, wow, we have three-quarters of a mile of unbroken homes of this size and stuff, they'd think, oh, no big deal, you know, we have fourteen miles of that, and that's the reality there. But that hasn't been the character of North Ogden up until now, we've had traditionally single-family, and so it is, it does change it, and I think it's inevitable.
This is the area that we planned this and where we've gone south to have these types.
I'm not against it, I'm just.
So we can keep the openness in the rest of the city.
You know, our point here is to have a discussion, and I'm bringing that up as a counterpoint. I'm not saying I'm against it, but that's the reality.
When we did the master plan or the general plan, part of the consideration was that we needed more of this type of housing. The demand was there, and it's, the demand is surpassing what we even imagined it would be. And so the idea was, do we take areas where there's already that type of housing and infill with the same type of housing? Or do we pocket higher-density housing up in the more single-family, the larger lots that are up higher on the hill? And the thinking for us was, you pocket the higher density together, and yeah, it does create, you know, that area, but it also eliminates putting higher density in other areas of the city where it really would, it would stick out in the middle of large acre, you know, like your neighborhood, my neighborhood, the larger lots. And suddenly, there's, you know, some of the land up behind, up behind you up on the hill there, if that sold and we put high-density up in there, that would stick out like crazy compared to fill, infilling this and meeting that design.
Well, remember, I'm not claiming to have a better solution.
No, no.
I'm pointing that out, that's, that's the residents' complaints, is when they see that, because they've lived in North Ogden and they've had half-acre lots for forty years and they see this, and there's an opposition to that.
But they moved there to downsize anyway.
People do.
That's the reason they go there anyway.
I didn't think people, you know, that his income hasn't changed, his, he, this guy I talked about earlier, he chose a home just like this, not quite this quality, because their family decided they wanted to travel. So he, like I said, they have four kids, and he wanted a nicer car and to travel. He drives some convertible to work now, and he travels, and his kids each share bedrooms, and he's happy. Not my choice, but you know.
I was surprised, I don't know why, I'd just been living under a rock, but I drove down twenty-five fifty, and if you drive down twenty-five fifty, it's high-density already, on the Pleasant View side of it, on Harrisville side of it. So this, I hate saying it, but it fits pretty well with everything else that's going on by the adjacent cities.
Well, it's the quantity of it that shocks people, but I think it's the quality that sells it, so. Unfortunately, when people see those buildings going up, they're very unlikely to drive through that neighborhood, right? Because you have to weave through to get there, and there's just no, there's nothing to draw them in there, but.
But there will be a pond, it's drawn there.
That's true. Steco.
We'll take the pond on later.
That you can go over the wall. I'm done, I'm done if you're done. Is there anything else that you want me to write down? I think this is a great start, we'll be working with Ken and John and his design team, address those kinds of things. They'll be working on coming up with finalized design plans, as well as they'll be working on a development agreement that will memorialize all of this, so it'll be coming back before you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Do you see, councilman back up?
Yep.
Your chair? Thank you, Chair.
So we have to do this here.
We should take like a little.
We'll be annexed to California then.
Yep, it's good. I know it's been the last.
Be ready to move in?
Yep.
Oh wait, maybe not.
Technical difficulties. Okay, we're back to the active agenda, back to item eight, discussion and action to consider accepting the Hall Brothers Land Company LLC and Ensmeyer petition for processing towards annexation located at approximately fifteen hundred east and twenty-seven fifty north. Our presenter is Annette Spandl, our city recorder.
So I'm gonna do that for Annette, so she can get her papers together. So for, the pit is down here, the Green Waste Pit is down here on the southeast corner of this black box. And this black box is the area that's proposed to be annexed, it's currently in the county. They're planning on doing more of these homes out in this area. They still own land here and land here that'll be annexed at some point in the future as well. But this is a hearing to basically start the annexation process, send out the appropriate public notices, and have the hearings and objection periods, and yeah, that's, that's it, yeah.
Is that, is that on the north side of twenty-seven fifty?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so twenty-seven fifty comes right here.
It comes in dead, and then you turn right to go to the.
Yeah, so the parking lot for the trailhead is right here.
Right, okay.
I'm assuming it's gonna be an RE twenty, or, I mean, because that's what I think is right to the west of that, isn't it?
Uh, no, this, I believe is R one-ten.
Oh, is it R one-ten?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So it would be more of that.
It'd be similar to that, though?
Yeah.
Okay. It's not gonna be a multifamily thing?
Right, and probably the biggest thing to note is that Mountain Road will be extended through here and eventually through the other phases and up through to thirty-one hundred.
Isn't Mountain Road an eighty-footer?
It is an eighty-footer, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, what they call a three-lane road, which is a middle lane and two travel lanes, or one travel lane each direction, so, you know. Any other questions?
Questions, discussion?
I'd make a proposal that we accept the Hall Brothers Land Company LLC petition for processing the annexation that's located approximately fifteen hundred east, twenty-seven fifty north.
The motion has been made by Councilman Turner.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilman Barker, starting the voting with Councilman Turner.
Yes.
Councilman Stoker?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes.
Councilman Barker?
Yes.
Councilman Severine?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now moving to the bottom of the page, our RDA agenda. Turn the time over to Evan Nelson, our finance director.
So we need to make a motion to adjourn the city council, go into the RDA.
Oh, sorry, gotta get to another meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
I'll move that we adjourn the city council meeting and reconvene in the RDA.
Motion has been made and seconded by Councilman Stoker. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll begin. We'll adjourn the regular meeting and move on to the RDA agenda. The public hearing to receive comments from public regarding the proposed RDA budget of fiscal year two thousand sixteen through nineteen. Our presenter will be Evan Nelson, our finance director, excuse me.
And Hore Carterless, or whatever it is.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So this is a meeting of the redevelopment agency board, which is also the city council. The redevelopment agency oversees two funds in the city. One is the RDA fund and one is the CDA fund, because we have two separate redevelopment areas that have been approved. The RDA is quite old, the CDA is quite new. So the CDA has not yet started to receive money as revenue flowing in from property tax increment. We expect those revenues to start in fiscal year two thousand twenty, so. So as a result of that, we have borrowed money from the RDA, the CDA has borrowed money from the RDA in the past couple of years that will be repaid as those revenues start flowing in. In the, in the proposed budget for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, the CDA has zero as a budget. We're proposing no loans, no expenditures at this point. It's possible that a project may come about during the fiscal year, and if that happens, then we would come back to the council with a proposed amendment to the CDA budget. But as of now, we, we don't foresee anything. In the RDA fund, we have a budget of six hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in revenue and six hundred and ninety-five thousand in expenditure, except two hundred and sixty-nine thousand five twenty-three of that is just being set aside for future use. It's not actually going to be spent. We're proposing eighty-two thousand dollars be used for phase three of the street lighting project along Washington Boulevard. And we're proposing three hundred and three thousand four seventy-seven be transferred to the aquatic center. As we've talked before, RDA funds are used to pay the debt on the aquatic center, so that's what that transfer is for. And then we have forty thousand in off-site improvements. That account has been used for the beautification that's happened along Washington Boulevard. And that would also be for other expenses that the council approves during the fiscal year for, you know, that are eligible for the RDA. So that's a summary of the budget that we've proposed and that we have discussed for those two funds. And I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any questions.
How much of that goes to the aquatic center?
Three hundred and three thousand four seventy-seven.
So council, for those of you who are new, if you remember, all of the RDA funds come from property taxes collected that would have gone to other agencies, special service districts like the fire district or the school system. Approximately in the RDA, I think, I think we give half of our property tax income from the, from those properties, which means three percent of this money is city property tax that would have gone to the city. So essentially, nine thousand dollars would have been money that the city would have collected, but the other two hundred and ninety thousand dollars approximately is money that other entities would have collected for that RDA bond payment, so just to help make sure that, you know, you all know what's going on.
And to go a little bit further, we do that, we sacrifice, or we give up that revenue for that period of time with the anticipation that the property values will be much higher once the RDA or the CDA close. So it's, it's a decision that was made by the entities, including the city, to invest in these areas so that the future value would bring future revenues much higher than what we were currently getting. So that's the logic.
When does the RDA mature?
Do you know, John?
I believe it's twenty-twenty-two or twenty-twenty-one, but it's.
Isn't it, wasn't it twenty years or something like that, it was total or?
It was twenty-five years, and I believe it was started in ninety-eight.
Any other questions for Evan? Okay, this is turned over as a public hearing for this particular item, the RDA agenda. If there's no public comments, they have a motion for adjournment?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Public hearing is closed, a motion for adjournment of the RDA agenda?
Are we doing public comments and council comments still, or what do we?
I thought we combined them.
So the, the way the agenda reads is technically there is public comments during the RDA agenda, and we did skip the public comments to close out the council. So we would need to probably do public comments for RDA and then adjourn back into the regular council meeting and do public and council comments then.
So we have done the adjournment for? RDA?
Yeah.
So I need to go back to the.
So we didn't vote on it yet, we just need to see if there's public comments for the RDA?
Public comments for RDA?
Move that we adjourn the RDA, reconvene in council meeting?
A move that we adjourn the RDA and reconvene the council meeting?
All second now?
It's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're back to the normal city council meeting. And what's left on the agenda is public comments, any other public comments from this group?
Brett Hamblin, nine sixty-three Dear Metals Drive. This is more of a question than comments, I'm not sure appropriate which one to come through, but I'm looking for some help on an issue. I'm on the board of trustees for the Northview Senior Center. And an issue or problem has come to my enlightenment, and before I go any further, I need to know who to talk to. What it is, the yearly boutique fundraiser that the senior center does, they start collecting items that people donate, like, the day after the boutique ends. And as it turns out, one of the trustees ends up storing them in her garage, and by the time the boutique comes, she. she's out of a garage, which one I didn't feel was appropriate, and she's kind of complained about and so forth. And so the thing that's come up is, and I don't like, I don't know whether to need to go to the planning commission or to city administrator or where to go. So I'm looking for a little help on where to start with this. But there's a vacant area just south of the senior center. And the director for the senior center tells me that the city owns that property and it's earmarked to become a parking lot or additional parking for the senior center. But what I was looking at or thinking is they're in dire need of place for storage. I just got asked to go over and try and do some physical help to try and relocate some things in the minimal storage they have inside now. And someone hit me up one other time earlier, a whole different scenario or story about storing a car or whatever, is shipping containers. You can buy those things relatively cheap, and I got checking into it. And those things, when you buy one, it's guaranteed to be leak-proof the day you buy it. So what I'm looking at or considering is, okay, can the senior center, city, somebody purchase one of those, set it on what's going to be the parking lot right adjacent to the senior center, and use it for storage that they need for their, through the whole year, fundraiser. But again, I don't know where to start. Like, okay, you can't do that within the city, or does the city really own that property like I was told? That's my problem. Where do I start? So I'm looking for some help.
So the city does own that property. Would be the council would be the place to start. We would need to revise our site plan for that facility. In commercial areas, we allow outdoor storage containers if it's on the site plan. And institutional uses like library schools, city buildings would fall under that type of a designation for an allowed site plan to include that, so.
Does that help you?
So who does he talk to to...
What do I do next, I guess?
So we probably would start with having Rob look at what we'd need to do for a site plan. And then, once we have that together, then we get permission from the council and then get planning, site plan approval from the planning commission.
One thing I'd add to is that when we do the, get the site plan, find out how much one of those containers costs and everything, see what it would take to have one here. So that when we discuss it, we can know how much money he's going to take for that container.
Would that be something that the city would do, or...
I don't know. We would discuss that because it's a shared senior center with the communities.
And that's why I wanted to ask is where I needed to go, because it sounds like, I think, before we go into a whole lot of site plan and causing you folks problems or whatever that way, what I was looking for is just to see where to go and if it was feasible and so forth. And it sounds like it really is at the upcoming, in a couple of weeks, next trustee meeting for the senior center. I present to them, okay, to make sure there, because this just came to my mind, and I started checking in just so I could take it to the meeting, but it's like, well, there's no use checking into how much one costs and how to get one and everything else if the city doesn't own it, or you folks say, nope, we're not going to do it, or whatever. But if it sounds like it's feasible on your part, then... And I did check in into one, and I'll get with them on the size, but it was like $4,000 to have one delivered. That was a 40 footer. So... That's big. Eight by eight by 40. And it was like $300 less for a 20 footer.
The delivery fee is the most expensive part of those containers.
Will you get together then with Rob or get that started?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Coleman, 1988 Fruitland Drive. I'm sorry it's late, and I'll keep this brief. But the first time I heard about the amphitheater, and I'm sorry to revert back, but was when I had gotten a message from a friend telling me about it. I live on Fruitland Drive. I had not heard about this update, you know, to make it bigger and better. I'd never received any notices, hadn't heard anything until this point. And now I'm starting to hear rumblings of a pond, which will be another big expense, the building, the upkeep, yada, 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 all that that will involve. I feel that if you were truly interested in what the people felt, what the people wanted, and had true transparency, that you would do everything, not just the minimal legal requirements, to get the information out to the people. A lot of people don't know how to navigate the internet. I don't take the newspaper. There was a comment made at another meeting that I was at that there were some flyers or something put in the grocery stores. When I go grocery shopping, I go into shop. I'm not looking at the boards or trying to find out what my city information is. And it's something of this magnitude, I would think that as a community, we have the right to have the information made more readily available, whether it's putting a little blip in our North Ogden City bills, utility bills, or in that, the new Connection magazine or something, something where it's going to reach a greater population, because this affects all of us. And I think, you know, we can all see the upset that has occurred because of this. So as we go forward with all these new ideas, you know, let the people be heard, but they can't be heard if they don't know. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, I'm Spencer Alexander. I live at 1740 North, 150 East. So one of the first things I want to talk about is an actual environmental concern I have. Could somebody tell me, is the proposed dog park that's supposed to go in the retention basin at 1700 North, is that still in the works? Or has that been up in the air, debating on a different location, or is that set?
Anybody know the answer to that one?
That has not been officially approved by the council. Based on my understanding, it was originally supposed to be a bike park, and the developers pitched a pet park, and that has not been approved, based on my...
Okay.
...understanding. But I, does the council remember anything different than that?
There's been about four different ideas.
First time, okay. All right. So I'm going to let you know what my concern is. I actually border that drainage, the Cold Creek slash Four Mile Creek drainage, was what I think I've seen on your records. I've caught beautiful trout out of there. Really nice. That water stays cold, stays clean for now. Now, if that ends up being a dog park and it only functions, so if, for example, that development, 614 whatever units, if people are allowed to have dogs, and you have that much high density using that retention basin, not everybody's going to clean up. Here effectively, when that floods, it will flush back, flush that back into that waterway. And I do know that further downstream, Harrisville has their pond, and they've actually paid money. They've purchased trout from the trout farm. So we would, in effect, be also affecting another community's area. So that I want to bring up. Now, the pond, the new pond that we're talking about, I'm looking at it, and there's just, they really need to hammer that out, figure it out. There's a couple of reasons. Because if they're wanting to be a beautiful, you just have too many conflicts of interest, okay? Because if you have people fishing, you're going to get fishing line, bait, stuff left by the beach, which if everybody has their nice fancy condos there, they might not like that. See, there's just so many things here that need to be ironed out. I'm not exactly opposed to that, other than the fact that we've also spent so much money on other things that we might need to take a step back. That's just my input. To do it right, I don't know. That's not up for me. But I just want to put that out there. So if somebody can look into the trout, because I would really hate to lose that, it's a nice addition. Also, too, I kind of think it's funny, because I see some of the stuff on Facebook, and you got like the ambulance, you know, stopping to save the ducks, and that's a great thing, but it's kind of hypocritical if then we go and dump dog feces in their waterway. You know, I get to see ducks, I get to see, I saw a great blue heron out of that stream. There's so much, we're becoming high density and whatever. That's, you like it, fine, whatever. Obviously, I don't. But the thing is, if we can save any amount of wild habitat we can, because we're going that way, it's even more important. And I think there's supposed to be a trell that's going to follow that at some point. So whatever we can do to make that look more natural, feel natural, protect the habitat, the wildlife, is important to me. So that's it.
Thank you for your comment.
I was pretty quick last time. Sean Casey, 2444 Bark Parkway, on the transparency, which seems to be coming up. The website is looking better, so nice job. We don't advertise on police cars, because that's weird, and we shouldn't do that. Likewise, our Ogden Connection Magazine, it's just an ad. Throw it away. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. There's no other comment. They'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I can say, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Staff comments?
Oh, yeah, staff.
Oh, staff comments, sorry.
I just want to go home.
Okay. Okay, Councilman Turner?
Just chalk it up meetings, been going well. Just to make a note, August 24th and 25th is the Chalk It Up Festival. And then on Mr. Shute, when he talked about the variance on a paved driveway, John, what would be his steps to be able to do that? Is there...
If it's a true variance he's asking for, then that would go before our hearing officer. If it's a special exception or a change in the code, then that would come before the planning commission and the council. I couldn't tell from his presentation, maybe some of you would know. It sounded almost like he was okay with asphalt, but not with concrete.
No.
He doesn't want anything.
He wants to leave it as gravel. It's been gravel that way for...
So then it would require an ordinance change. I don't think he would be successful in getting a variance, because the reason he wants the variance is to not spend the money. In the state code, it says you can't be asking for a variance for financial reasons. So it would come to the council after going to the planning commission on what type of pavement access we are going to require.
Okay. That's it.
Councilman Severing? Councilman Barker?
Yeah, even though I want to go home, I've got a couple of things. First, just something to think about. I'm not a fan of our Mayor Taylor discussion Facebook page anymore. I think we've lost all hope, whatever that was supposed to be used for. It's now become so mean, dividing. I haven't even looked at it in weeks. I think we maybe need to, like Sean Casey said, our website's doing great. Maybe we should consider pulling away from that for the time and see how it goes. Just something to think about. I know a lot of people are going away from it just because it's not very, it's, as a citizen of North Ogden, I don't want to be a part of it. It's too divisive. Second, I'm not a fan of the pond either. I think I liked what, make sure you say your name right. Mrs. Coleman said we should probably do an open house, maybe see what the public really wants, see if it's really in our city's best interest to do this pond. I know it's great to do a detention basin/pine view basin is the pond with the wall in the middle. A good idea? I don't know. So I like to do maybe an open house, just something to think about.
I have plans for that.
June 12.
Oh, we are doing one? Oh, great.
From 4 to 6. It's in the magazine.
Okay.
June 12.
Okay, June 12.
Will be the open.
Oh, yeah, I did see it on the website, but, okay. Yep, so...
It's in the magazine.
And then, yeah, that's it. The Connection Magazine, my picture, I think I was told, looks pretty good, so I'm in there. But that's all I got. Okay.
Councilman Swanson?
June 12 to what time?
It's from 4 to 6.
4 to 6?
Just a couple of things. One, council, I sent you an email on a proposal to change our sign ordinances so that we can allow the small political campaign signs in the park strip. I think it's silly that we can't put them in the park strip. I don't want the larger signs for site triangle reasons in the strip. But if you're a nod, I'd like John to take a look at the wording in that ordinance and what changes we could make and bring that back to us that would allow those political statement campaign signs to be in the park strip, instead of them being collected up by inspectors and such as they drive around. We have to maintain it. We have to plant in it. I think we ought to be able to put our political signs in it.
Well, Phil, I did comment...
As long as they're not stucco signs.
I did comment on your email. I don't know if you saw that. I'm not necessarily in favor of changing it. I think it's fine the way it is, just because if you start changing it, that's a public right of way now. So what public right of ways are we going to limit, you know? And so I'm just, just look at my comments. I'm okay discussing it. And the park strip in front of your house is different than the public right of way, like at the park, by the dog park.
That's why I'd want the language to be such that it would be the park strip in front of your house that you have to maintain.
And then, so then I'm not opposed to that. But I just said my thoughts.
Not in the public right of way. I don't want signs everywhere in the public right of way. Absolutely not.
Is that just for, going to be for campaign signs?
It would be for campaign and political signs only, not advertising or anything like that. First Amendment stuff, right?
Then that's part of First Amendment.
Advertising isn't.
I'm with Carl. We went through this how many years ago on signs, long intensive. So, I mean, I'm open for discussion, but I'm not, I'm open for discussion.
Okay, that's all I'm asking.
And not to probably change.
Councilman Barker, regarding the Facebook page, it's not a Facebook page. It's a private page by a private individual.
I understand.
So asking the city to pull out of it...
My thinking is maybe we should stop advertising as a city on it.
We don't advertise on it.
Stop posting stuff as city representatives. I'm just saying, I've had a lot of people come to me, and they're not, no one's the ones. It's split the city in half. The half that are on there now are on there, and they're all on one side. Everyone else is against it, so.
Against what?
Against, they won't even look at the page anymore. So what good is it to have, to put our stuff there if we're not even reaching?
I know the agendas that we've...
That's just my own.
I'm just saying the agendas and stuff that we post on there get seen by about 2,500 people, so.
Right.
That's 80% of the membership, so. What was the other thing I was going to say? Oh, and the North Ogden Connection Magazine, that also is not a city, it's not, John, explain the exact relationship that we have with North, it is a private magazine that the city participates in, correct?
Right, we put our information through it.
We're essentially buying space in it.
We do call it the official magazine, but it's essentially, we buy space in it for, as opposed to sending newsletters out.
Right. And what we spend each month on that is what we were spending on sending newsletters out in the mailer.
Right.
So there's no additional cost to residents or anything like that. It's the same we'd spend on paper and stamps to put a mailer in with the bills.
The one exception is I believe we save money on our cherry days.
We save a lot of money on our cherry days, yeah, on that cherry days insert. So that's the only, that's all I have.
Hey, Councilman Stoker?
Nope.
John?
A couple of questions that came up tonight. The benefits, the one department that has high benefits, we have an unusual amount of individuals in that department who possibly can retire, and so we've included their retirement payouts as part of that. And so it falls in that benefit, which is why it's skewed. That department does get a few other minor benefits that make their percentage a little higher, but in general, the standard benefit that the state requires us to give our employees is the same across all departments. The, let's see, it was referenced, the parking for the amphitheater. The planning director was looking at the parking code and said it's 1 to 6. We are still maintaining that 1 to 4 is what we're really asking for, but in his staff report, he said this is what it allows for is 1 to 6, but I'll make sure that in the meeting tomorrow, it's clear that we're only asking for 1 to 4.
But I'll make sure that in the meeting tomorrow, it's clear that we're only asking for one to four. And then, let's see, what else? Oh, on the pond, I think it's pretty clear that we've moved significantly away from the fishing, partly because of shoreline and hooks and things like that. There was talk of doing like a spring one before the system kicked on. And, yeah, that type of thing, so. And the other thing about that project is we don't have to do all the components, meaning we could just build a detention basin there and not do an irrigation or a park. But where we've committed, you know, a couple of weeks ago to sell the existing pond, we do need a new detention basin facility. So, and sorry, the existing detention pond, not pond, because we don't have another one. So, just to make it clear, that's what's going on, so. Okay, that's all I have.
And then? Now, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a second.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Man.
I don't remember. Who's second?
Me?
Blake. It's hard when we do the multiple. Oh, I need to turn off.